Calling this evening's meeting to order. Thank you for joining us. Can we have a roll call, Mr. Calavita?
Dr. Genovasi. Mr. Kapadia?
Here.
Dr. Liliston?
Here.
Mr. Peters?
Here.
Dr. Resnick?
Here.
Mr. Slotman?
Here.
Dr. Stilianu?
Here.
Ms. Williams-Galliano?
Here.
Dr. Wilson?
Awesome. Please join me in the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The New Jersey Open Public Meeting Law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advance notice of and to attend the meetings of public bodies at which any business affecting their interest is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with provisions of the Act, the Hopewell Valley Regional Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published by having the date, time, and place thereof communicated to the Hopewell Valley News and The Times on January 7th, 2025. This meeting notice was also sent to Comcast Cable and Verizon FiOS. The Board does reserve the right to enter into executive session during all meetings of the Board of Education. The meeting is being recorded for the purposes of board review, future reference, preparation of the minutes, and viewing on YouTube Bulldog TV and the school district website, www.hvrsd.org. Members of the public who intend to participate in public comment, we do ask that you sign in prior to speaking. This will assist us with our record-keeping. Thank you. And with that, we are going to move on to approving minutes. I need a first and second to approve the minutes from the February 24th regular meeting.
Motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstaining? Seeing none, meetings' minutes are passed. I'm going to go ahead and move to the superintendent's message. Oh, student rep, I'm so sorry. Flipped my page too soon. Erin, thank you for joining us this evening.
As spring approaches, many students have begun spring sports, which officially started last week. Many students are engaged in a variety of sports, including baseball, softball, boys' and girls' lacrosse, boys' tennis, unified spring track, boys' and girls' track, boys' volleyball, and golf. Additionally, on March 7th, our senior student athletes participated in the signing day ceremony, celebrating their commitments to continue their athletic careers at the college level. Academically, NJGPA testing was administered for all students in the classes 26 on March 10th and 11th. Furthermore, students enrolled in AP and honors US history classes had the opportunity to attend the annual Washington DC trip last week. Student Council has been actively planning various school spirit events to foster engagement and enthusiasm throughout the student body. We've created an exciting new event called Pack the Pound, which aims to increase school spirit in our student section at spring sports, sporting events. Student Council has selected key games from each spring sport and encouraged students to attend, showing support for our athletes. Looking ahead, the Student Council is also preparing for the annual Spring Pep Rally and Spirit Week, which will take place next week. We are excited about these upcoming activities and look forward to seeing continued enthusiasm and involvement from our student body.
Thank you, Ms. Green. Any questions from the Board? Okay, seeing none, thank you for your report, and of course, you're welcome to stay with With that, we'll move on to the superintendent's report.
Good evening, and I'm glad to see folks here on a St. Patrick's Day. I have my green on. So I guess I was the only one that was pinched when I was a kid when I forgot to wear green on St. Patrick's Day. Anybody remember that? Okay, see, that wasn't cool. But anyway, and we weren't even in the same state, so I think it was a thing, or we're just old. But I wanted to thank everyone for coming to this meeting tonight. We'll be talking about and hopefully adopting a proposal for our budget for the upcoming school year. We have our supervisor of counseling and our assistant principal of HR that's going to share our school safety report for this, for tonight. But before we start, I wanted to thank you all for committing to coming tonight, for continuing to commit to supporting our schools, especially on a night like tonight when I know there's a lot going on in the community. But I wanted to also take a moment to address an issue that is becoming increasingly concerning in our district. The rise of incivility in our district that is playing out in our schools, at our board meetings, in emails, at parent meetings, and in posts on social media. Our school district has always prided itself, or at least I believe so, in fostering a culture of respect, inclusion, and collaboration. Unfortunately, we have seen an increase in behaviors that run counter to these values: verbal attacks, disrespectful interactions, and decisiveness that has hindered our ability to work together for the success of our students. This trend is not unique to our community, but is one that is playing out on the larger, national, and global stage. While incivilities creep into our schools, when they do, I should say, when they creep into our schools and our board meetings and to our digital spaces, it creates an environment that is not only unproductive but unsafe for the folks that are in that environment. Students cannot thrive in an atmosphere of hostility, and educators cannot do their best work when distracted by conflict and tension. Those who follow the news know that this is, this is a big thing that's going on all over the world. In our community, though, it is the disrespectful and harassing comments that our faculty are hearing amongst the students and maybe engaging in. The leadership and the teachers experiencing that from the community, and us feeling that here at the board meetings. It is the hate symbols and racial slurs that are written on the walls in our schools and on the desks in our schools, and not just in the middle school, it's happening at the elementary level as well as happening at the high school level. The slanderous and hateful posts that occur on social media and that we engage in, it is singling out each other's children and families and scapegoating each other. We will never agree on everything that happens in this community, and we should challenge each other so we make sure that we improve and do our best, always. But this kind of destructive discourse is a cancer, and it's already to begin, beginning to erode the very fabric of our community. That is why I'm calling on the entire community, everyone here, whether you have children in our district or not, our teachers, everyone, all the adults in this community, to help share and recommit to our mission that we're making our schools safe, welcoming, and respectful places for all. We must set an example for our children, we must show him that, show them that disagreements can be handled respectfully, and that differing opinions do not have to be led by hostility or lead to hostility. Respect is the foundation for any strong community, and frankly, for any democracy. My teachers and school leaders cannot do this alone. As a collective, we must create an atmosphere where every student, staff member, and stakeholder feel safe, heard, and valued. I urge everyone to consider how they can contribute to this effort of positivity, how we can reinforce this in our homes with our young people, and most importantly, how do we model and create the community that we want to be proud of and where everyone can thrive together. As a district, I commit, and my team commits, to continuing to do this work and to continue to teach our children the expectations of civil discourse and respectful behavior. This includes how we behave in our schools, any school-endorsed functions, and online. What I ask of each of you, parents, staff, and community members, is to actively foster an environment of respect as well. And then on a private, on a personal note, because I'm here in support of everyone that's in this district. I've been here for 13 years in this district. I started serving as a vice principal, and I eventually became your superintendent, and I was grateful that you selected me to lead. In that time, I've had my transcripts Oprah'd, Open Public Record Act, so people can make sure that I'm qualified to be here. I assure you that I am, because this district doesn't hire anyone that's not qualified to be here. Recently, I had my contract Oprah'd. You're welcome to get my contract, it's available online, you really didn't even need to Oprah that, it's online for everyone to see. And recently, I had someone follow me through this community in a Jeep and stalk me and try to intimidate me. Here is the thing, those of you who know me and have known me for some time should know that I don't intimidate easily, I'm not, I don't bully easily, and I don't turn away when I think I'm doing the right thing. And I believe that I'm here doing the right thing for your children, right? And even that person who followed me, if that person has a baby in this school district, I'm here for that person too. So those kind of tactics don't work for me. They're not, I'm going to keep showing up until you tell me, okay, I'm not, you know, Rosetta, move on, right? I just want to let you know that this idea of sending people or surrogates to kind of attack school leadership, and it's not just happening to me. Other superintendents are getting death threats, they're getting emails, they're getting signs posted, they're getting websites started against them. I hope that you understand that I'm here, because I would only do for your children what I would want somebody to do for me. I don't care if you're conservative or Democrat, if you, if you're, if a child has special needs, if you yourself are special needs, what color or walk of life you come from. I'm here for every child, every child, and I'm going to continue to do that as long as I'm here. So I thank you for your time, and I, and I hope that we can move forward and go back to being the district that I know we are. So I thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Trese. So as I oftentimes speak after Dr. Trese, because I, it's important for me to communicate to all of you that this Board is fully 100% behind this administrative body, and absolutely behind Dr. Trese with full confidence and support. The only thing I will say to underscore Dr. Trese's point is that sometimes passion shows up to other people as incitement. And I, I'm not saying any of this to school you as parents or as an adult, but to say that we are at a tipping point in which we get to choose what kind of community we raise our children in, and we also get to model for our children who we want them to show up as when they become adults or advocate for themselves in school. So I would certainly ask you or invite you to listen to your conversations with your middle schoolers and your elementary, your older elementary school kids about their experience at school, because that will help you understand how you can help them adapt during the day. And the final point I will say is that the experience that Dr. Trese had is, may seem unique to some of you, but there are oftentimes when individuals in our community might not feel safe. So our environment of safety, it is part of our mission. We are a public school, we make every child feel safe, and we need your help to do that. So this is the, one of those waving white flag moments where you say, oh gosh, something is really off here? What can I do? What's going on? Am I contributing? Not for the sake of blame, but for the sake of who do we want to be for our children? This entire Board is volunteer, and we will continue to be volunteer, because we are here for the quality of every single child and every child's education and safety and well-being. So I just invite you, I implore you, my children are long out of the community, but I love Hopewell Valley, and I will continue to be committed, along with you, to being a better place and space for our babies and our children. So hopefully, that helps us reframe how we talk to one another, how we stand up at the podium to share public comments, and certainly how we listen to our kids when they come home and tell their story and experience a school that is uncomfortable and unsafe for them, because they depend on us. We are their safe space. With that, I'm going to go ahead and move us on to the agenda, but thank you for the report, Dr. Trese. Moving on, we're going to go ahead and do our public hearing and presentation on our This was not planned this way, by the way. Segue.
All right, good evening, everyone. So this is the annual presentation on the findings from the first half of the school year, September through December, for the student safety data systems. You may remember Cory and I presented in the fall on last year, which was the both periods, September through June. So this is just the first half of this current school year. So this is an example of the student safety data systems form that's reported to the state. This also includes any HIB reports that take place. The second page includes any student restraints or seclusion that is needed. I know Paulette has shared information on that before with you. Paulette?
Hi, yes, all staff that supports our students that need de-escalation techniques are trained in safety care training. Our district behaviorists works across the district to train our staff, along with Mr. George Needham, who is our secondary supervisor of special education, and Ms. Mickey Coakley, who is a school psychologist. They train staff in this. We record it on an official document. We contact parents if we do need to put our hands on a child to keep them safe and others safe, and we also document it with the state.
Thank you. So this next slide is the category, so it's how the state categorizes each of the incident types, so you can see what is included for violence, vandalism, substance, and weapons So this chart is a breakdown of offense by school, with the incident across the top and the school along the side. Just a few things to note. For substance, these are numbers that refer to students who were found in possession of or under the influence while at school. While vaping falls under the tobacco policy, if other substances are included, such as THC, then that would be considered a substance incident. Violence, I know I say this frequently, but when we consider violence in Hopewell, it's not often reported in other districts. So if there's an altercation of any physical nature, our administrators consider that under violence and list that on this report. We know that that is not often the case in other districts. One other thing to note, one incident may include more than one student. So for example, if there is a fight or a physical altercation between two students, that would be considered one incident report. In addition, one incident can include more than one violation. So you might have, say, fighting and vandalism, could be two violations on one report. Please note that restraint, seclusion, and HIB alleged, those last two columns, are not included in the incident totals, however, they are still reported to the state. We were very happy that in this first period, there were zero weapons that were noted. Here is a three-year mid-year comparison of incidents. All right, so these are the numbers for the entire district for the actions taken, and they represent the total number of days served for in-school suspension and out-of-school suspension. These include all consequences resulting from HIB investigations, these SSDS incidents, and other conduct violations. That would be things like inappropriate conduct, vaping, open defiance, things like that. So please note on this, multiple students, as I said before, may be involved in one incident. So two students may be found stealing from the cafeteria together, this would be considered one incident, but they each would receive specific consequences for their actions. Based on the student code of conduct, these consequences may have been split between an in-school or out-of-school suspension per past board recommendations, leading to an increase in the number of type of suspensions when compared to the incident numbers, which you saw on the previous slides. So for this year, in fact, we have had three incidents that had two students involved in each. In addition, it's important to remember the timing of suspensions. Our administrators, often if there are multiple students involved in an incident, they don't want those students together in an ISS room, so they will split up when ISS occurs or when OSS occurs. We've had some parents request that their child not serve in an ISS and would prefer an OSS situation, even though that's not what our handbook says. And just a reminder too, if it's a student's second offense, they do receive more days for that infraction. Here you can see the mid-year report numbers for the last three years. So Hopewell Valley has had a threat assessment team for many years, but a few, last year, I think it was, I actually shared that the state now requires it of all school districts in New Jersey. So we were ahead of the curve on this. However, they have not asked us to report these numbers, but we think that that is coming down the pike as well. Just as we are with incident reporting, so too are we with these threat assessments. So when something occurs, our administrators are overly cautious. They make sure they go through the process fully if there's any indication of an issue. So this year, there were two identified threats, and these situations, board members, you will remember, were shared earlier with you in executive session, just the subject of those issues. There were four other situations in which a screening was needed, however, they were deemed not a threat, and they didn't need to continue all the way to the end of that process. In each of those situations, though, part of the practice is making sure the police are involved, there's ongoing collaboration with the parents and the school, there's a system of supports that put, that are put in place for students, counseling, restorative practices, and it could take on a bunch of other things depending on the needs of that student, but those are some frequent parts of the plans to support those children. All right, so now Cory is going to discuss some of our programming.
Thank you. So to paraphrase a couple of things that were said earlier, we strive to create safe, welcoming, and respectful environments for all, and in fact, that is part of our mission. According to a joint statement by a group of national associations representing school psychologists, school resource officers, and school principals, among others, there are several best practices related to creating that environment. They include strong school-community connection, proactive teaching of social-emotional skills, access to mental health support, and preventative as well as responsive efforts to address things that impact student state, safety, like drug or alcohol use, violence, or bullying We have a lot to say about each of these areas and a lot to be proud of. In terms of community connections, I won't read everything here, I know that you can all do that, I'll just highlight a couple of things. We do have a great partnership with Detective Marlon Webb, who trains our staff and students in restorative circle practices. We offer twice a year a parent-university that's led by a Rutgers University Behavioral Health clinician who we have on-site that sees children K through 12. Under proactively teaching social-emotional skills, we have Tier One, that means access for every student to Character Strong in grades K through 8. Counselors push into classes to teach lessons in problem-solving, conflict resolution, and more. And we also offer teen mental health training. Related to mental health supports in schools, I already mentioned the Rutgers University Behavioral Health clinician. We also have 12 school counselors. Several of those counselors are further credentialed than what is required to serve as a school counselor in a public school. We have a number of school psychologists and social workers, air dogs, the bat team, and, and more. Related finally in engaging in prevention and intervention efforts, each building has an anti-bullying specialist and a school safety team that looks at trends and data to help us identify areas for improvement. We have an active district SEL committee that meets regularly, many of them on their, on their own time, to address our students' social-emotional learning and make it a regular experience at, at school. For instance, that committee just pushed out suggestions for social-emotional learning that could occur tomorrow during the abbreviated schedule. We also regularly practice things like the Week of Respect and School Resource Officer Recognition, so our students know what to do in the event that they ever feel insecure about the environment around them. And lastly, as Ms. D'Nardo mentioned earlier, we have faculty who are trained in safety cares and the nurtured heart approach. The training focuses on providing knowledge and skill in de-escalation on the rare occasions when a student becomes so overwhelmed that they need help in this area. This is just one of the many additional things that we do. Every student receives lessons on resilience and wellness, including mental health, making healthy choices, and stress management techniques in their wellness classes. With that, I say thank you.
Thanks, Cory. Are there any questions for members of the Board?
Do we have to hold these down to talk? Or is that what the trick with this mic is? Okay, so I'll hold it down. Thank you. This was a great presentation, I really appreciated it, and appreciated you sending the slide deck in advance as well. The first thing I'll share, and I shared this comment by email, but I just wanted to highlight it for my Board colleagues as well, is I really appreciated how you broke each of the interventions out under the best practices for promoting student safety. I think it really highlights, first of all, how much evidence-based practices are going on in this school to promote student safety, but also particularly as we think about the budget, really putting our resources behind those practices that we know work. So thank you, I really appreciated it. I had one question, so I know I had, I had reached back down to you and asked if you could share the side, the slide related to student suspensions over time, and one of the things I noticed when I looked at that is that out-of-school suspensions have gone up. And so I was wondering if you can share whether those are new suspensions, if those are repeat suspensions, and just sort of what we're seeing there. I think one of the reasons I'm wondering about it is because when we had some discussions around the code of conduct this year, some of the feedback that we got was that during last year's sort of midpoint, when we looked at the, the suspensions, the number of suspensions, I think, had actually gone down, and part of that was attributed to the use of restorative justice practices. And so to see them shoot up again a little bit, I was just wondering if you had some thoughts about what might be going on? It's the slide after, yeah, there you go.
So in, in speaking with the administrators, you know, if you look at what the students are getting these for, that's, they're following the, the new code of conduct and board policies and things like that, and kind of going back to what I said, some parents have been asking for OSS rather than ISS, and based on what the incidents are. So if there are issues where students are physical in nature, they are splitting the ISS and the OSS up. When I look through the reports, you know, the, the drug and alcohol policy still has occasions where OSS needs to happen. So I don't know that there's any specific reason why that would be going on, I think it's just the way it's broken down, and there were some students who had repeat, so this was not their first time having an offense, so that, as I said before, they did get a little bit of a steeper consequence than first-time students in, in a drug and alcohol situation or substance.
So as a point of clarification, if they're splitting their, between in-school and out-of-school, are we counting it in both bars, is what I'm understanding?
Yes.
They're both being counted.
Another point of clarification, so, because I'm not sure whether I understand this or not. So if there were, so like, say there is- So if there were, so like, say there is a physical altercation, and you don't want them to have OST at the same time or in-school at the same time, and they got two days each, that would count as four days, correct? But if we didn't have that and they did it at the same time, it would count as two. Is that correct? Or no, each student counts its own?
Each student. It's each student.
Okay.
So each student's consequence is counted singularly.
Just a quick question. What's the end of this reporting period? When does it go up?
So this is just September through the end of December, and then we have January through June.
All right, so the recent issues in Timber Lane would not be in here yet.
Correct.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you all, and we will have a public comment on this particular report. Members of the public are invited to address the board on the report just presented for a maximum of three minutes during this portion of the meeting. You're asked to state your name, address, and municipality. In response to your comments, the Board of Education may respond or direct the superintendent to do so. The board may also opt to take the matter up at a future meeting so that the matter is researched by the district administration. Public comments are now open.
And just for anyone coming up now or later, I am your friendly timekeeper. When you have 30 seconds left, I will hold up yellow, and when your time is up, I will hold up red.
And if you don't see the red, I will gavel you. Okay, seeing no public comment on this section, we do need to do, I'm sorry? Oh, okay. We need a first and second to accept the report.
Motion. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstaining? Seeing none, the report is accepted. We're going to go ahead and move on to our budget. Mr. Colavita.
Okay, as Mr. Colavita queues up the presentation, quickly, we are, if you want to go to the next slide. Our budget reflects our values as a community. My administrative team and my, and my cabinet office that are here have been working very hard with the Finance and Facility Committee to bring you this budget today. It's, it's been a har, it's been a hard job, a heavy lift, but we believe that we're bringing a budget to you that maintains all of the programming that we value while also being fiscally responsible and making sure that we are able to cover the costs for next year. If you want to go to the next slide, Mr. Colavita. We are in the budget process of May 17th, where we're adopting a tentative budget today, hopefully. So what we're going to go through today is the budget we're presenting for the '25-'26 school year, a tentative budget for that. Next slide.
So just want to, after the board submits, after the board does hopefully approve a budget tonight, the board must submit the budget to the County Superintendent of Schools, who may or may not make changes to it, minor changes. Minor changes don't require a full board approval. And then ultimately, we, on April 28th, will have a final adoption at a public hearing in April.
These were the budget priorities this year. I'm not going to read all the things off of this slide, but the big pieces are that we wanted to maintain the programs that you value and hold dear. Our mission statement always guides everything that we do, making sure that we're in compliance to the New Jersey, you know, meeting the, the New Jersey learning standards that are put forth before us, meeting all contractual and salary needs, you know, our, our main, you know, reoccurring bills that we need to pay for the district. So all of that prepares us for that in uncertain times. Now, this is where we stand right now. I know we've had questions about what does this mean if the Department of Ed at the federal level goes away, and, and what does that mean in terms of budget? Right now, we are functioning as, as if we, we have the money that the state has given us and that we're moving forward with that. I don't see any, any changes coming, but we may have to adjust if there are changes that happen to the money that we get from the federal level. Things that we considered, actually Bob, I'm going to let you jump in here.
So what, the things, these are the things that we considered as we were preparing this budget. As you may or may not know, the, the district is capped at a 2% tax on, on the, 2% on the tax levy. There are certain waivers that you are eligible or ineligible for. This year, we qualified for a health benefit waiver, which helps to offset the increasing costs of providing health benefits for all of our staff members. That was around $1.7 million. We also got an enrollment increase this year based upon state reports that project our enrollment out. We submit data, and there is a formula that, that tracks what they expect our enrollment to grow to next year. That was approximately a $200,000 waiver. So those two waivers enable us to increase our available cap by about $2 million this year. We did receive an additional $400,000 in state aid this year as well. Federal aid, we are anticipating less. Now, when I say less, we typically get somewhere in the area of $1 million split, not equally between the IDEA, Individuals with Disability and Education Act, that's probably in this area of 800,000, and the Title Grants, Title 1, 2, 3, and 4, which goes towards very specific categories that affect our most needy students, as well as, and Vicki, correct me if I'm wrong, training for staff members, and then Title 4 is for-
School culture.
Cultural, yeah. Okay? And those are specific dollar-in, dollar-out. They don't go to fund our regular general ed and specialized programs. These are specialized programs that are dollar-in, dollar-out. So they have told us to expect approximately 10% less than we got this current year, but we don't know yet. We're still waiting on those numbers. They should actually be coming out in the next month or so, if we're lucky. Other things that help balance our budget, we do take in tuition students. There's two categories. We do have some staff members who bring their, their children to our facility and they pay tuition for it. We also are very proud of our in-house special education programs, and we are able to sell some seats to other area schools who wish to have their children placed in our school district rather than another private school. So we do make up some revenue, revenue from that. We rent our facilities out to the community. We have limited that to mostly, if not 100%, in-district organizations, the Pop-Warners, the Hopewell-Tally Rec Department, local soccer, baseball associations. We, due to damage that we incurred years ago, we don't typically allow non-affiliated groups to use our facilities anymore, but it is, it is a decent amount of money, maybe in the area of $125,000 a year in that kind of revenue. We are planning to implement, it was a big discussion this fall regarding the reimplementation of athletic and co-curricular fees to our budget. That, that could be estimated somewhere in the area of $200,000 towards balancing that particular portion of our budget. And transportation fees for our non-remote students, students less than two miles from the school. It's called courtesy busing, and we have been charging for that for the past many years, but will need to increase those fees this year to the actual cost due to, due to additional routes that we've had to take on for regular students. We just, it's, it's a cost that we can't support or can't subsidize anymore. And then another area of the budget, using savings, using some of our savings to put into our general fund budget to help offset the, the shortfall that we did have. On the other side, we are right now in a period of inflation. Everything seems to be going up from our delivery of health benefits to all of the supplies that we buy, to this energy that we're consuming. We just got a notice today that our, our Wi-Fi services are, are being increased, our bid that we, we did approve a new bid for that, but it doesn't go into effect until July. But again, everything that we seem to do from, from, from supplies to textbooks to everything is, is increasing. We deliver instruction to students, so curriculum instruction is a, is a big driver. You know, we need to provide all of those materials to, to instruct your children. I mentioned transportation. We have added four this year, four new routes to accommodate the new enrollment that we're seeing in the Stony Brook and Bear Tavern area. We did not expect to have to add these so soon, but we are adding them now, and they'll continue to grow next year. The rate of increase for those routes is 3.6% for next year. Remember, going back to our 2% cap, all these things are increasing greater than that. Insurance, both property and casualty and health benefit insurance, we're looking at 10% increases in both of those, driven again, and I, this kind of struck me as odd, but a lot of the increases we're seeing in our property and casualty insurance are linked to the disasters that are being experienced globally, okay? The, the wildfires that we saw in California, the floods and the hurricanes that we're seeing down south, all have an effect on our rating for the insurances that we're picking up here. And again, health insurance, as you probably are seeing in your own lives, the cost to provide health insurance is, is increasing greatly, and that is in large part driven by the state. The state dictates the minimum level of policy that we're allowed to provide, and we must offer that to every employee regardless. So the cost savings we were able to ensure years, achieve years ago is not there anymore. We did take a tour of this building. This is our newest building. It's 22 years old at this point, almost 23 years old, and it's starting to start to need some tender loving care. The air conditioning systems are starting to, need to be replaced, the roofing needs to be replaced, and it's going on district-wide. As you may know, we had a referendum that, that we put out in September. It didn't pass, and those things still need to be repaired. So again, this facility, the cost of maintaining these facilities can be quite costly. We, we've tried to hold that budget flat year-to-year, is only, it's, there's less than a 1% increase in that budget this year, so most of that, most of our dollars are going toward the classroom. Special ed is just a function of, of what we do. We provide a wonderful program here. Ms. Donardo runs that program for the, that population of students, but it is, is a big driver to our, our education. Staffing, we are, and we'll see this in a slide later on, 80% of our budget is staffing and benefits for all staff, okay? It's just, it's what we do. We provide education. We're not making widgets here. We're, we're having folks in classrooms educating and taking care of your children on a daily basis. Technology is starting to creep deeper and deeper into our budget. Everything you see is almost tied to technology these days. We've got projectors in the ceiling, we've got all of our, you go to fire alarms, all are tied into the technology infrastructure, and we need to continue to upgrade that and, and keep it strong. I think there was, Tannen, correct me if I'm wrong on this, but we did get a notice from the state that we had to increase our bandwidth for testing purposes, and that was discussed in our, our technology committee, that we need to increase the bandwidth that we're providing for testing purposes. So again, more costs going to that. And again, as we all know, the anticipated growth that is affecting our community due to three major subdivisions that are being currently, some are at the end of implementation, some are just starting. So we should see, over the next 10 years, 400 to 500 students coming into the Valley So we have done a number of things to control costs. I know I was just harping on the fact that health benefits are costing a significant amount of money in our, in our district, but we are self-insured. So what that means to you is that we don't pay a premium. We pay for the cost of providing the service. So if we run well in a given budget year, we get to keep the money. If we run poorly, on the other hand, we do have to, to come up with the difference. We have a lot of measures in place to keep that plan solvent and, and very effective right now. It's just the costs keep going up, and we need to budget for that. We've talked about special ed and bringing students back, and we feel that we have the, among the strongest programs in the state, giving our children the, the least restricted environment as required by law.
And if I can just say something there, you know, as, we, we do have a high classification rate as far as other districts here in Mercer County, because people come here because we do a great job, our team, Ms. Donardo and her team does such a great job. So when we have students with IAPs, they're going to increase our staff. You're going to need two teachers in a classroom, you're going to need paraprofessionals and therapists and all of these folks, but we can service more children in one classroom, although the class size is limited. Then, how much is the tuition to send each one of these kids out?
This year, I would say the range is between 75,000 and up-
Right.
-per student.
Per student. So we, you know, while it's an expense for us to hire the staff, we feel like we do a better job, and it is a cost savings to the district.
That's a, that's great, great points. We do participate in the School Choice Program. At our high school, we have a Performing Arts Academy where I believe we bring in, I think there's 17, 17 students now? 19? 19 students that participate in that program, and it brings in a little bit more than $300,000 to our budget each year from the state. Again, we talked about technology and, and how we've, we're increasing the use of our technology, but we have a, a system where we can maintain a, a better platform. We are able to do things cheaper than other districts. Other districts are playing, paying millions of dollars for Wi-Fi services, and we pay less than $40,000 for that. So the way we've gotten creative with our technology to save the district money, moving to that. When I, my department, my, when we do our purchasing, most, if not all, the things that we purchase are through cooperative purchasing. We are in groups that go out and bid all of the different items that we need, and then we, we try to keep our people limited to those particular areas unless we bid it ourselves. In doing this, we are in compliance with, with state law, but we're also, when you bid with hundreds of other school districts, you tend to get better prices. And we can do that for a thing, everything from energy to technology equipment to, you know, buildings and grounds equipment, anything that you can think of, we can typically purchase through a cooperative, saving us money. Again, we talked facilities. We have a, a great in-house staff of custodians and maintenance folks that can do a lot of the things that a lot of other districts pay on a time and materials basis to a private contractor. We have in-house staff that can do that and saves us, I, we gather, say, hundreds of thousands of dollars in labor costs that we can do ourselves. So again, we have tried to do what we can over the past several years to limit costs in other areas to put the money back into the classroom. However, we are needing to make budget reductions this year to get to our limit. I'll pass it off to Dr. Treese.
So the, the list that's here is, or the, the cuts that we're going to make to balance our budget, or we have, we are going to make moving forward, that we've decided to make. So one of the things is the balancing of class sizes. Class size will increase across the board for all the schools. So the conversations that we had at Bear Tavern about them having these pockets of classrooms with more students, we're going to be looking at district redistricting this, this summer. We've already started that work. We're going to do that in a way that doesn't cause us to add a lot more bus routes, which, because it'll just change one, go into one pocket out of the other. But the class size will go up. We will no longer enjoy the small class size of 15, 16, 17 in a classroom. That's not a classroom that is required to have a small classroom, that, that small. Eliminating and changing to full charge for the courtesy busing, so if we're going to run it, we're going to put out a survey to the parents that currently receive it, and if they're willing to pay the full price for that seat, then we will continue to run that, offer that seat, otherwise, we will have to eliminate it. We have, our administrators looking at reinstating an athletic and extracurricular fee. They're looking at doing that in a way where parents can, can contribute if their children are going to participate in extracurricular sports and activities, but also receive some savings after your child is in multiples, or if you have multiple children in your family participating, so that, you know, you're not paying these separate subscriptions for that. Restructuring the K-12 elect, elect, exploratory elective offerings. At the high school, or actually middle school through high school, grades 6 through 12, if the course is undersubscribed and it's an elective, we're not going to run it, and they're going to be eliminated through that, or reduced through that. At the elementary level, we're going to consolidate our exploratories. Students will still receive all of the things they're receiving now, STEAM, music, wellness, media center, all of those things, but we're going to be looking at the staffing, consolidating that, and maybe reducing the frequency that some of these electives happen, but they're definitely going to be experiencing all of them moving forward. We're eliminating auto shop because we can't find anyone to, to do, take the job anyway, so that's going to be a natural one where we're going to have to just eliminate. So the maintenance of that shop, as well as the salary and the benefits that go with that, will go away. Reduction of district-funded field trips. So field trips will still happen, but the ones- So field trips will still happen, but the ones that are, do not fit within our budget that we just kind of took the cost on for in the past, we will no longer be able to do that. And then we also will be eliminating and consolidating non-instructional staff positions. This is not your paraprofessionals. This is really the folks that, you know, run our offices, our assistants and things like that. And then people that are not direct, direct contract, contact with students.
Okay, so the purpose of this graph, it shows, it just want to show where our, our money is going. The part at the top, 12 o'clock, where we show athletics and co-curricular and swinging down to your right, all the way up to our staff benefits area, those are direct costs that go into the education of our students. Includes all of our teachers, our administrators, our paraprofessionals, all of those things that go into educating our students. The other areas indirectly affect our students. The transportation obviously is getting those students to school. Operations is keeping the building safe and, and ready for their occupation. Debt services is our debt that we pay on all of our facilities. There is only one outstanding debt service and that was for the 2016 referendum. All our other debt has been paid. We do still have, I think that debt rolls off in 2032. And, you know, it gets us back towards our athletics, but the vast majority of our budget is going towards that direct instruction. As I mentioned, 76.4% of our total budget is, is in salaries and benefits of our staff members. And this just kind of gives an, an overall shot of the general categories of our budget. Our budget is increasing expenditure wise by 3.1%. And corresponding revenues in the state of New Jersey must have a balanced budget. Again, we talked a little bit about the arrow going towards the local tax levy. Of that $92 million, that 1.7, 1.8 million dollar health benefit waiver and the $200,000 enrollment waiver have gone to enable our local tax levy to go from the four, from the two to the 4.1 that you see listed there. The key to the budget that I wanted to mention to the board, as we've been talking the entirety of the winter and early fall, is that we were able this year through our budgeting process to reduce the amount of surplus used to balance this budget. Was a goal of mine. The $4 million we placed in the budget last year was becoming unsustainable. What that meant was we would start, and, and Mr. Peters singled this out last year, basically what it meant was we were starting off the school year $4 million in the hole. We needed to make up that $4 million before we did anything else. Getting this down to the 2.7 million dollar range is great, will provide a great relief and hopefully enhance the way we budget next year. And just taking what you just saw and kind of breaking that down, we are a school district that is heavily dependent on local funding for the management of our schools, to which 87% of that comes from your local property taxes. Another 2% comes from those miscellaneous revenues such as tuitions and transportation fees that we spoke of earlier. And 3% of our budget comes from the savings that we generate from year to year. And again, where do those savings come from? As I mentioned earlier, if we don't spend, if we have a good year in health benefits and we don't spend all of that money, that money rolls to savings. And it's got to be used for a specific purpose. It can't be used for just anything. It's got to be appropriated by the board for specific purposes. Typically, we don't appropriate during the year, it's done at budget time. Again, state funding, state funding over the past 10 years has increased. We have not been one of the districts that were losing funds. We've gained, which is, is a, a helpful sign, and we are increasing in enrollment right now where, which is what drove our enrollment, our state aid increase this year. Other districts who are seeing stagnant enrollment right now, Robbinsville for one, they've gotten flat funding. Other districts like Hillsborough and Jackson, they're seeing huge decreases in funding because of enrollment. So we're happy there. Again, federal funding for the past many years has, has hovered around 1% of our budget. And again, it's used for very specific purposes and is not a huge driver in, in, in our budget. Okay, again, we mentioned that the tax levy is going up 4.1%. 4.3% is our general fund tax levy increase. We are seeing a reduction in our debt service for next year, just in the way the calculation works. So combined the, the increase in the general and the decrease in the debt, the, the net increase is 4.1%. You might say, I thought we had a 2% increase, but again, as I mentioned, the, the two waivers and it'll allow us to exceed that. Lastly, what does it mean to the average homeowner? The average home prices in this area hover right around the $500,000 mark in each of the three municipalities. So if you have a house that is valued at that, you would see a $281 increase to your taxes. Hopewell Township would see a $295 increase and Pennington Borough would see a $343 increase for next year. And that's, that takes us to the end. Take questions now from.
Any questions from the board?
First.
I know there has been a lot of discussion throughout the week, asking questions of the finance committee, so I acknowledge that some of it has already been answered hardly.
Sorry, I figured someone would show we have a question before me. Can you, Bob, just, have you, and I guess maybe, you know, this is the first part and then down the line, you, you know, sort of look at, and Dr. Treese, sorry, both you obviously, are, you know, as you looked at implementation of some of these different fees, do you have, I guess I'd ask first, you know, what do other districts around us do? Are there other pay for play districts when it comes to sports and sort of, have, have we sort of already done that investigation in terms of, you know, what that looks like for them? In the past, I mean, we've, we've been here a certain period of time. I, I understand the past that we've had some sort of system like this here. Can you talk a little bit about, you know, what that looked like? You know, how, you know, in terms of not just the amount of fee, but is it, you know, uniform? Is there a tiering? Is it different for middle school than high school? Or is that sort of down the line right now?
No, I mean, we have a pretty good idea of what we, we're going to recommend to the finance committee and ultimately the full board. Next, you know, as soon as we start to meet again. There are many districts in the state that do these kinds of fees. I mean, Chatham, Rockfish Valley, Berkeley, I broke my glasses earlier, so.
There you go.
That works. Haddonfield, Hillsborough, Robbinsville, Bernards Township, Moorestown, Jackson, East Brunswick, South Hunterdon, Haddonfield, Allentown, Cherry Hill, to name a few. I mean, there's, there are others, but these are the ones that were close to us.
So Ms. Riley and Mr. Turnbull and Mr. Becker, our athletic director, have been researching, looking at what other districts do, and also deliberating on, on different configurations of what could be done and what was done in the past, right here. We were at a point in, in the district where we could offer, you know, sports and clubs without that at one point, and we're just not at that place again. So we're revisiting what was done in the past and what maybe didn't work in the past versus now. But I've asked them to come around to the finance and facilities committee, also education program committee, to record that for you all, so you can take a look at, you know, if you can attend maybe, just so you can see the options that are available, maybe what they're, what they're saying and also, you know, give your feedback before we put anything out to the community.
Essentially, what they're looking at is, is any club or athletic activity at the middle school and the high school that require a paid staff position.
Right.
So sports would be, you know, at one fee and the clubs would be at a price that was behalf of that. So, you know, everything from robotics to jazz bands to, you know, track and field to the play, all of those things would have different levels of, of.
But not, I guess that wouldn't extend to the elementary level?
No.
No, because they don't.
Because they have, yeah, theirs are already paid.
Okay. Yeah, no, well, yeah, I guess so, yeah. No, because I know Robbinsville is an example. I know they do an elementary level fee for some of their clubs. I was just curious if that had been contemplated.
And, and so would this extend to clubs that meet during the school day as well?
Anyone that has a paid advisor or equipment.
Okay.
And just clarification on any supporting students that may not.
Always. If there's, there's children that, that financially can't afford a, to enroll in these things because of, you know, free and reduced lunch or that, all the districts already have something like that in place, and we already have something in place for those things as well.
And again, that's all confidential. It's not, it's, it's between the parent and the principal, and, and there's nobody that needs to know other than the folks that are involved.
And again, this would also take into consideration folks with multiple children, kids that participate in multiple sports, into clubs, things like that.
So there'd be almost like a, you know, like when you enroll in camps in the summer, if you roll in, you know, four weeks, you get a discount, like, so if you did three sports, you'd pay.
There'd be, there's going to be an individual child discount and a family discount, family max. It's really a discount, it's more of a cap.
And, and sorry to ask all the questions here, I apologize, but on the courtesy busing, just out of curiosity, so if you, you're going to do a survey, right, is what I heard? And if you get enough folks that say, we just, we're not going to do it, we're going to drive our kids, or, or whatever, would you just eliminate that? You just eliminate that bus route altogether? Is that how that would work?
I mean, the courtesy students aren't, they're not their own buses. So they, they run, they ride with, I mean, they're just, they're placed on routes wherever they, from wherever they live. We're going to do this early in this, in the, in the process so that we know if folks decide that they don't want to participate in the service, that we can utilize the buses for those who qualify for the service.
Any other questions? Okay, seeing none, we're going to go ahead and move on to public comment specifically regarding the budget.
Members of the public are invited to address the board on the 2025, 2026 tentative budget for a maximum of three minutes during this portion of the meeting. You're asked to state your name, address and municipality. In response to your comments, the Board of Education may respond or direct the superintendent to do so. The board may also opt to take the matter up at a future meeting so that the matter is researched by the district administration. Members of the public are reminded to, who, who intend to participate are reminded to sign in at the podium prior to speaking. Thank you.
Good evening. Catherine Fulmer Hogan, Hopewell Township. I know you mentioned courtesy busing. Historically, there was a distinction between hazardous and courtesy busing, and I'm just wondering if that still stands or if hazardous busing students are going to be expected to cover the cost of their seat as well? That's it, thank you.
Should build time in for the name writing thing, you know?
Signing in does not count towards your time.
I know, but it's all awkward. This could be on YouTube, something to be like, why does that guy take so long to write his name? Joseph Beavis, I live in Hopewell Township, takes me a minute to remember. It's called Titusville where I am. I just had some questions and then a thought. Specifically, the question was, how are we computing two miles? That is, as it takes me to drive two miles or as a compass point circling? Also, it sounds like you guys have an idea of what the fee's going to be, but you're like, there's going to be a fee. Might be helpful to know what the fee's going to be for the rest of us, so we can plan. It was noted that there are in-house staff, or, or I would call them specialists, say like an HVAC person. I'd be interested to know how the township, how the school board and the district is monitoring those people and what they're doing. It's based on very specific information that I have. I'm not saying anything, I'm just saying, you might want to keep an eye. Sorry, that sounds kind of conspiratorial. I'm not a conspiracy person, I apologize. And then the other thing is there was talk about consolidating or eliminating non-teaching positions and also working to communally, I can't remember the word that's on the slide because I didn't write it down, for the certain costs. I'm interested to know if there has been thought about consolidating or immediate, or eliminating administrative positions, or working as well with other districts, not just in Mercer County, to try and use, find cost savings in that there's a role that could be done by one person for two or three districts. Thanks, that's it.
Never thought I'd be here. Heather Irishmott. I have a picture of that, of the screen, and I can't get it up. I wanted to know increased class size, and Paulette, I'd like you to answer. This is not something that can be done for special ed students, so it can't. It absolutely can't. So I just would like someone to speak further, if possible. Paulette. Mr. Carnation, he has to be replaced. There's somebody out there who will replace him. There's not just this little bubble. My son flourished from that class. I'm sorry. Mr. Carnation is the, Mr. Carnation is the auto shop. This, Hopewell's not the only bubble. There's people, I mean, you said it, people want to come here. There are other people out there. Aiden's in Florida and he was so excited to tell me that he changed something, I can't tell you what, but Mr. Carnation helped me. So, you know, we need to work a little harder on that because that is a life skill. And I, I just really believe, I mean, it's my own son, but I really believe that's something that is a life skill. And that's it. You just want me to write budget after the reason?
Yep, that's fine.
Okay.
So the courtesy versus hazard, anybody who's had, I don't need this anymore. Hazardous remains the same. It's not paid for now anyway, so that's, anybody who doesn't have a safe, meaning a sidewalk road to school, is transported for free.
And how is, how is the courtesy calculated?
Oh, it's port to portal. It's not.
It's two miles from the door.
It's walking to, from your front door to the front door of the school.
Road.
What?
On the road.
On the road, on the road. You know, not as, not as the crow flies.
The fees, okay, go ahead.
It, it's going to be recalculated, but it's, it's somewhere in the area of $1,000 per seat.
So the, no, the fees for the activities, for, for the sports and the clubs has not been determined yet. I, the, we're going to have them come present to the board some of their ideas, but there, there are some options that they're going to give, so I don't want to throw out a number yet because the board is going to help us decide on what that number is. The director of facilities is the one who monitors our maintenance and facilities crew, and there are two supervisors that serve under him. One that supervises the facilities folks and one that supervises the maintenance folks. Our supervisors and our, our directors are, monitor what they're doing. They also give up, you know, evaluations of those folks and hold them accountable for their jobs. So I'm, you know, that's, those are the folks that are in charge of that. In charge of administration and consolidation of administrators. That might be where I have to go next to cut. Right now, this district is really understaffed. We don't have the number of administrators other districts have, and our administrators aren't paid as well as other districts are paid. Can there be a consolidation across districts? Yes, there could be, but that's not, not going to happen with us reaching out to another district because we're all governed by different municipalities, we're all governed by different school boards. The reason why the, we have an executive superintendent over Mercer County, over Bergen County, over all these counties, they were charged with, years ago, I think it was under Christie, I'm not even sure, I think it was under Christie, to kind of consolidate all of. I think it was under Christie, to kind of consolidate all, like, some of these districts and make them larger, and so we wouldn't have this duplications of superintendents and CNI people. That has never kind of come to fruition because folks don't wanna give up their specific areas, and they're, you know, it's, it's mayors, it's, it's municipalities, it's school boards, that are all part of that conversation. So that's not something this board by themselves can decide to do, but yes, that would be a savings in the state of New Jersey, however, the, the state of New Jersey has not successfully pulled that off. But that's not something that we can just kind of initiate on our own. Municipalities can do it, but I don't know that that's something that's gonna happen in this, in this area either.
Just to clarify, administrative role in our district means that it's building administrators as well as?
Supervisors.
Yeah, so.
There, there are, there are some districts in Monmouth County, Ocean County, Huntering County, I believe, some of the areas where they have really small school districts that share principals, they share business administrators, but those are largely where they have two or 300 kids in the whole district. I know Belmar and Lake Como share a business administrator. It's where they, and they're contiguous. So, years ago, when we used to be three separate school districts, it might have been worth, worthwhile to merge Hopewell, Pennington, and Hopewell into, that's why they merged into one district, where actually a regional district. Those kinds of districts are the ones sharing services, and they all agree to use the same financial software, the, you know, policy manuals all have to match up, so it becomes a very difficult process when you have to maintain all different, you know, sources of information throughout each one. The other thing I wanted to also comment on, we do have a work order system where all of our maintenance work is tracked and, and monitored by both the two supervisors that Dr. Treese recommended, and also their, their boss. So, we do have a pretty sophisticated work order system that's monitored almost on a daily basis, definitely on a daily basis.
For the special ed question, and I know, Mr. Nardo, you wanted her to answer that for you? I could probably answer it as well, though.
That's okay. So, we are mandated by the New Jersey Code for Special Education, and I think most of you know I'm a role follower. So, our class sizes in special education are limited by the New Jersey Code. So, for example, if you're in an elementary classroom and a child is receiving support in a resource room, the max number of students that we can have in that room, per the New Jersey Code, is nine. And that applies to all special education classrooms. So, we do follow that. Thanks.
And inclusion classes are capped as well. So, we're talking about general ed when I'm talking about increasing class sizes. Auto shop, believe it or not, it is not, the, the colleges don't offer the program anymore. So, folks can't get certified in it. That's, this is what happened with Home Economics as well. If you don't have a place to get certified, there aren't teachers in, in the field, and they're aging out now. I even tapped my, my son's teacher who's retired in Pennsylvania to try to get him to come out of retirement, and he was like, nope, not doing it, I'm good. He's over subbing in, over in Council Rock. These, it's just not even offered anymore in colleges to get certified to become a teacher of auto shop. So, our students still do have the avail, the ability to go study auto shop at our tech schools. They are actually tooled and have partnerships with the, with the car dealerships. Now, you know, most of our cars, the newer cars, you couldn't flip the hood and work on it anyway without the proper tools, and have the computer system and the, and the tools that are specific to a dealership. So, although we tried our best, it's just that they aren't, they aren't out there anymore, and that's unfortunate because it is a skill. I knew how to change oil and tires and all those things, too, because my dad had all girls, and he was a mechanic, and we just had to learn, right? So, 'cause he wasn't doing it for all of us. So, it was a good skill to know. Think I got them all?
Yes, you did. Thank you all. With that, public comment is now closed on the budget. However, we do have a public comment opportunity. Oh, sorry. We are voting, yes. I need, I need a first and second to move the budget.
So moved.
Roll call vote, please.
Dr. Genovacy.
Yes.
Mr. Kapadia.
Yes.
Dr. Liliston.
Yes.
Mr. Peters.
Yes.
Dr. Resnick.
Yes.
Mr. Slotman.
I just, if I could just briefly, just point a privilege, just to briefly explain myself here. I've talked to Bob. I'm just not 100% to the comfort point I need to be at this juncture, and obviously reserve the right to change my mind, but at this moment in time, I think I just have to vote no. So, I just wanted to briefly, you know, for the reasons I mentioned before, as well as some others, but obviously, you know, looking forward to the discussion between now and April.
Hey, Dr. Stilliano. Dr. Wilson.
Yes.
Ms. Williams-Galliano.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay.
Can I make a comment, too?
You may.
I, I, I gasped a little bit when I saw that budget, and the percentage increase of my vote of yes was very considered. It's some very difficult trade-offs that we had to make, and ultimately, to me, maintaining as much of what we have in the district today seemed to be the right choice to make. Now, obviously, we could've gone for a lower tax rate increase, but the cuts would've had to be quite a bit deeper. So, that's why I took a deep breath before I said yes on the vote, but, and, and, and I wanna recognize that in this current situation, this is a painful increase to the taxpayers of, of the district, but I do think it's important, both for the schools and for what we have in the district, and ultimately for the property values of everybody, not just the people that send the kids to the district, to maintain the, the, the quality of education that we have in this district.
Yeah, thanks. Thank you, Alex, and thanks, John. I, I do, that's why I think it was so important to acknowledge that there's been a lot of dialogue and asking questions and, and kind of, I think Bob's phone number is on speed dial for a lot of people, but it has been a very active discussion, and rightfully so. We don't take it lightly. So, thank you all for actively participating along this week and trying to better understand and, and just ultimately make your decision. Okay?
Again, I do appreciate the comments from board members. They, you know, we had many discussions with probably half of the board in the past week. All welcome, and if we can help you understand why we're doing certain things and why certain things function differently in a, in a school budget versus a regular, you know, out, out in the, in the private sector world, there's, there's a lot of differences into how we have to budget. So, again, if you have comments and questions, it's ongoing, please don't hesitate to reach out.
And if I could just take a moment to thank my, my principals and my supervisors for really, really, this was not easy this year. This was, every year's tough, but I think this has been one of the toughest budget seasons we've had, and so I wanna thank Vicki, your folks, and, and, and our principals for, for the heavy lifting for this.
So, there's two more comments that I have. Would that be okay? There's a couple of comments that I wrote down.
Do you wanna make them in finance, or do you wanna?
It was in response to some things that people said, so. So, oops, glasses. So, I will preface it by saying that as a board, we have a supervisory role, so we don't necessarily get into all the nitty gritty, nor should we, but we do get to see a lot of the process of how the sausage is made. So, I don't know about any particular member of the facilities team, but we do regularly, the facilities and finance committee meeting, review all the things that the facilities team does, and the cost savings that we have, because we're able to do a tremendous amount of work in-house as opposed to having to get contractors to do everything. So, again, I can't, I wouldn't even know about any specific, particular member of the facilities team, but that team as a whole is great, and is becoming increasingly difficult to maintain in a school district environment because we don't pay what HVAC people, what electricians can get out of district. And that brings me to my second point on the shop teacher. Unfortunately, from what I see, this is going to be an increasing problem for not just the auto shop, but other specialties, and it pains me, 'cause I, I think we're one of the last districts to have practical arts to still offer for them. I see us struggling to find people who are either able or willing, and they have to be both able and willing to teach those, and unfortunately, that is going to be an ongoing problem across a number of specialty subjects, and that's not a district problem. It is a side effect of the way public education is set up. I have my own opinions about how the blame is to be apportioned, but there is a lot of mechanisms in place, and the unfortunate unintended consequence of those mechanisms is that districts, public districts at least, are gonna have an increasingly hard time finding people to teach anything that's not a core, commonly taken subject.
Even that, I mean, wellness has gone away at a lot of schools. But, you know, TC&J did away with their wellness. Spanish has gone away at a lot of, of schools around us. Luckily, we just had a student, we have a student teacher right now for woodshop. So, hopefully, and our woodshop teacher is, is rather young, so that was exciting. But for the most part, the colleges and universities are jumping these.
Yeah, so I personally would love to see us continue that, but realistically, I don't know what's gonna happen once the T-shirts that we have in, in the subject stop, start retiring.
Right, just so folks know, it's not that there isn't a retired mechanic out there that can come in and teach. They have to be a certified teacher. What's that? Right, yeah, yeah, yeah.
They would have to have a lot more education than a normal auto mechanic would.
And get paid less.
And they would get paid less, and they have to deal with being a teacher in a public school, and that's the.
Yeah, but typically, in the years past, we got retired mechanics who came in to do it.
It's usually not the kids.
So, so I, I think that it, those are great points regarding trade and just, I love practical arts, it's a great way of stating it. But regarding our professional maintenance and facilities folks, I think it's more, it's also important to note that it is unusual to have such a skilled staff, and it is hard to not just keep them, but to backfill them when they do retire or leave, because a lot of people would make more money in, in a union if you're a plumber or electrician, and literally, they're needed everywhere, out in, you know, doing the work in our homes, but also here. So, we are particularly blessed to have the crew that we have and be able to save. It's part of why we've been able to keep our facilities budget a little less, or more lean, I should say, over the years, but, you know, now, now we have to, as we cannot staff the skill, we have to pay more in addition to all of our equipment and, and materials that are also increasing. So, challenges all around, but we continue to take our blessings where they come, and we have a great crew. Okay, with that, we're wrapping budget and moving on to a open public comment section for any matter outside of, sorry, hate to manage the glasses, outside of the budget. So, members of the public are invited to address the board on any matter for a maximum of three minutes during this portion of the meeting. You're asked to state your name, address, and municipality, and in response to your comment, the Board of Education may respond or direct the superintendent to do so. The board may also opt to take the matter up at a future meeting so that the matter is researched by the district administration. With that, public comment is now open.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Hey, my name is April. Oh, wow, okay. My name is April Johnson. Address is 2465 Pennington Road in Pennington. This is just a kind of question and concern about the HIB policy. Is there any action taken when a child has become a victim of a HIB violation three separate times? I've, this is a little personal, 'cause it's actually happening to my son currently, but each perpetrator that has stated what they say as a slur to my son is different. It hasn't been the same person every time. It's been somebody different. And I've received a letter from you guys stating that my son has been the victim. I'll probably be receiving the third letter from you guys. But he's done restorative circle with the child that had said the slur. He's went to go see the counselor. He's active, like, within the school. So, is there any support additional for a child who has been a victim three times of HIB? That's, that's it. Thank you.
Kat Fulmer-Hogan, Hopewell Township. As the parent of a middle schooler, it is very evident to me that bias incidents are on the rise at our middle school, and now our community at large is very much aware of, of that fact. And whether it's centered in your, your culture, your religion, your racial identity, gender identity, orientation, you name it, students are going for it. I raised a young person who was incredibly confident. You could ask the current principal there, because they are now seeing a very different child at Timberland than they saw at Bear Tavern. I now have a child who's asking multiple times a week to, for me to take them out of this school. I don't know how we fix this. I do realize that it's a community issue, and that there needs to be a greater level of empathy. People need to understand that just because it doesn't impact you directly doesn't mean that it shouldn't matter to you, and I am deeply concerned that it does appear that much of this dialogue is coming either from home or from social media. I am just here as a parent expressing concern. I have a lot of confidence in this district. I mean, I wouldn't be here this long if I didn't, but I am deeply concerned about what is happening. And so, just seeing the lack of confidence at present in a middle school student is utterly heartbreaking, because as a parent, we do so much work in pouring into these kids so that they can walk into spaces and be comfortable. And I am just as upset about the incidences that directly impacted my child as the swastikas, to be clear, because it's all cut from the same cloth, and it matters to me as a parent in this community, and it should matter to all of us. So, thank you.
Go to the mic so we can hear you. It's being recorded, it's being recorded. It's being recorded, it's being recorded, so...
Before I speak, can I ask a question about the budget?
Yes.
I wouldn't live here any longer had it not been for the band, for my daughter. Bob, were you saying that also, I forgot to include that, the band would be included? Really? Because we would have moved due to two incidents.
Can, can you, just for, again, we're recording, so there was a lot of eye contact. Can you finish your question so it can be on record?
We would have moved due to the two incidents that happened. And what I'm asking is, and I didn't do it because my dad moved me in eighth grade, and I still remember that. So what I'm asking is, does my, do we have to pay for my daughter to be in the band that she thinks this is the only band in the damn world? So, and I get it, she's a kid, but after coming here, you all know, I was out the door, and now you're telling me I gotta pay for this? Is that, I just, I just, just please answer me that, because I don't even want to be in this building. And I want to know if that's the projected, you know, say, or whatever. I'm sure you'll ask a question.
I'm Kelly Beaman, Hopewell Township, and I have two children in the school district. One who is a 10th grader at the high school, and my daughter who's an 8th grader at Timberland. And I just wanted to speak to the social issues and the email, of course, that we received from Principal Turnbull about the unfortunate writing on the wall. I'm proud to say that my daughter is one of the students who participates in the restorative circle. It has made a big difference for her in feeling like she's doing something and like she is a good citizen, you know, in the school. And she certainly was worried about fitting in, you know, when we moved here from New York not too long ago. So, I just wanted to speak to the, that side of it and just reinforce what Catherine said earlier, which is that it is frustrating, even for a student who, like my daughter, is, I think, involved at like, you know, very high level where she's interacting with the assistant principals, she's interacting with Principal Turnbull, she's interacting with other teachers, and with Detective Marlon Webb who leads restorative circle. And still, these incidences persist, and although she's bringing all of her tools to bear, sometimes she still comes home with stories of things that groups of kids have said. And, I mean, just to be transparent, it's often, there are often situations where it's gender bias, and it's boys in particular, maybe they're imitating something else. But it's, you know, it's difficult to keep the morale up and a confidence level, I think, in, in the faculty that they're going to do something. I think there have been attempts, and there is, it sounds like a plan to have some experts speak to the kids, but I would love to hear that some people, but men in particular, speak to some of the boys, because I feel there's a high concentration of boys who think this sort of thing is funny. It's reinforced on social media to make fun of girls, to maybe talk down about people who are different, who have a different orientation. Anyway, I just wanted to share that from a different perspective.
Just to clarify, yellow's 30 seconds.
My name is Renata Barnes, Sioux Road, Pennington. I guess that's Hopewell Township. I don't have a child in the district anymore. I did. But I am standing here and standing with my friends who all have children in the district. And specifically, I want to address what's been happening with the swastika and all things like that. I'm sure you remember years ago, we had Hopewell Valley Race and Diversity that was created around the George Floyd stuff and whatnot. What is happening now politically, but maybe more specifically right here, this type of thing happens when we're not vigilant. We used to have tons of people come to those meetings, and then all of a sudden, people started coming. It wasn't in the news, it wasn't my problem, it didn't matter. It matters. For those of you who think you're exempt from this, it matters. Because the people who are being affected don't look like you, it matters. Because if it's not you today, trust me, it will be you tomorrow. I spent last week on Capitol Hill advocating for the environment, advocating for DEI, advocating for people who don't have voices, and I will tell you that if I was not there, take a good look at me. You all see me? If I was not there, me, there would have been no one to advocate for those people. So I am saying that in this district, we need to make sure we stand up for everybody all the time. I know you have a million things to do. Make it a million and one. Thank you, Dr. Treese. Thank you, Anita. Thank you, School Board.
Lee Rosenfield, 88 Harberton, Mountain Area Road, Hopewell Township. So, I'm kind of guilty because it was only, as a Jewish American, it was only until I read the article about the swastikas that it caught my attention, and I didn't realize that there have been other incidents of bias and hate in the district, and I've learned this over the last few days. The last time I stood before the Board of Education, I was advocating for gender-inclusive spaces and restrooms, and the Board, I believe, at the time, did the right thing, and I don't remember the exact issue, but that was the first time I was here for that, and now I'm here. I came tonight specifically out of concern, as a Jewish person, but I really do understand that this is a much deeper problem in our society and in this community. And I do hope that we will all take a very active role in dealing with this. The vitriol that ensued online in the last couple of days has really demonstrated that our children are being taught hate in the home and in the community at large, and we all have a responsibility to tamp it down. And, you know, I'll certainly try to do my part, but I have two children in the district, my son Ethan, my daughter Eliana, a senior and a freshman in high school, you know, that come from a two-dad, three-dad family. And, you know, we're very diverse. We represent the diversity. So I just wanted to acknowledge that, and I particularly want to give a shout out to Dr. Treese because you're amazing, and you're a great leader for this community, and we're very fortunate to have you. And thank you for standing up for our students.
Tamia McQueen, Pennington, Harberton Road, Pennington. First, I just wanted to second a few of the previous voices that came before, certainly standing together with our two previous residents and reiterating my concern that we stand together as a community for the type of people that we want our children to be and that we want to model for them. I did have a question. I wanted to know if student-led activities would be a part of those activities that would incur fees? And also, oh, there's one other thing, lost my train of thought. I'm going to write while I try to remember what I was saying. I'll jump back up if I remember. Thank you.
Hello. Can y'all hear?
We can hear you.
All right. My name is Bina Long, and I'm in, from Pennington. So, I too am a member of this community. I've lived here for 24 years. I did pull my son from the district after middle school, but it was really, he needed a different type of learning environment. I moved here knowing that this school district was amazing, that my son really received tremendous education for the time that he was within the school district. And yet, as a community member, I am here as a Jew, and I apologize for the rest of the community as well, for my own not recognizing what may be going on or has been going on and not being involved. I think as all of us know, when we get involved in raising our children, we get really hyper-focused on the needs of our children. My son is soon, I think he's considered an adult now, so I am back as a member of this community and really was delighted by the fact, as odd as this sounds, to see the digital Mercer Me listing as I perused Facebook and realizing, oh my goodness, this is something quite serious going on. For me, a swastika is not a neutral thing. It is very much Jewish oriented as far as hate goes, and yet I know hate is, can be universally used in many forms. But I really do want to address that as we look at in the district and in ways of making our world one that really appreciates every single person for who they are as best we can, I do want to speak out because of the increases in antisemitism have skyrocketed, that the Jewish aspect of this is directly addressed. Because I come from family that have uplifted so many different people through our generations, and I never thought I would see this in my lifetime, and it's here. The hate, and once it's, you know, within our community, we say, if it starts with the Jews, it's not ending with the Jews. As another beautiful member of our community said, it might not be affecting you, but it does in different ways. And I was really dismayed to hear Dr. Treese, as well as your personal experience, and the blatant types of behaviors that are really above and beyond. So I present myself here today as a member of the community in support of you all, and thank you for the work that you are doing, and look forward to us uplifting and bringing the light and joy that is within all of us and our students more and more into our district and our homes. Thank you.
I remembered what I was going to say. I wanted to also second the request...
We, we'll have to have you, sorry, we'll have to have you come back on the second public comment. Yeah, so, you, no. Once you've finished communicating, the first counts as your time.
Oh, okay.
But you'll have another opportunity later.
Okay.
Please write it down, don't forget. Oh, you're good. Come on up. Come on up.
Kate Hamm, Hopewell Township. Some of you may or may not know, we've lived here about seven years, and it is extremely disturbing for me to hear what has been going on amplified lately, but I'm going to tell you, it's nothing new because my family experienced this moving here, where my daughter was in elementary school, with students and parents and staff making comments of racially driven, that's not your mother, she doesn't look like you, she's the babysitter, a number of underlying comments. I say that was seven years ago, but just last year, my daughter was again a victim of a student who screamed disrespectful, rude, and racial comments in her face, and nothing was done by a staff member. I have been profiled by a staff member in this school district who continues to be employed here. It is not just a student thing, it is not just a home thing, this is a community. And to have a community that works together, there has to be an open relationship, two-way street between home and school. I can remember being very involved in DEI committees that existed here in this district. They were district level, then they were moved to school-based, and now I've heard nothing for the last few years about DEI committees attending any meetings. I'm not sure what has happened. But what I will leave with is, until the unaffected are affected, nothing is going to change. We need everyone to stand shoulder to shoulder to fight this.
Okay. We're getting better at keeping all these notes in the comments.
Yes, we are, but I think, you know, a lot of these are overlapping. I'm going to start with the, with the activity fees. The student-led that don't have an advisor clubs, there's some of those, will not be part of the activity fee because we're really just trying to cover or defray the cost, we're not even going to cover with any activity fee we institute. Those things that cost us money with equipment, with coaches, with referees, with, you know, our athletic trainers, all these folks that have to support these, and the stipends for clubs and, and coaches. So that, those are the things that we're going to be looking to institute a fee for, and band is part of that because the equipment and all of that is quite costly. In terms of the bias incidents that have been happening at the middle school, middle school is a time where there's going to be lots of misbehavior, right? Most schools across the state of New Jersey have a very high HIB, harassment, intimidation, and bullying issue. There are students that are going to experience more than one of these. The fact that we have 11 approved in a single month is a lot. We may have 30 in a month, but maybe two of those are really founded as fitting that law and that description per code. Whether or not it checks the box or you receive a letter as a parent has nothing to do with the consequence that we issue as a result of a student breaking our code of conduct and misbehaving. I'm going to say this, though. As, that letter that we sent, that Mr. Turnbull sent out saying that we've had a problem, and that invites parents to a forum, and it's supposed to be on April 23rd, but we're moving it because that's the Holocaust Remembrance Day, and folks are celebrating on that day, so he's going to be moving that date to another day in that week to accommodate, making sure that he doesn't do something about this topic that excludes a major portion of the people that won't want to come to that, right? But one of the things that we need to ask is that what I've seen as a former vice principal and middle school principal is kids mirror whatever's happening in the community. Somebody made a comment about needing male role models for our students. There's, our male, white, Christian students are struggling and need role models to teach them how to do that without toxicity. The role models that they see online are not helpful. So yes, that's a place where we can use people to help out. We need men of all walks of life to help these boys to grow into men. I watched a series, a very limited series on Netflix the other day, it was very disturbing. It was, it was called Adolescence, and it was about, it was a four-part series about children, especially male students, getting into some very big trouble around them not knowing what to do with this energy, and the things that they're seeing online is not helpful. I need parents to monitor what kids are looking at online, not just our male students. We see spikes... We see spikes of this when they're playing video games. Call of Duty is, was one of the big ones, where they're hearing, seeing a lot of swastikas and they're, and it's, it's historically based in war. We are in the midst of teaching about the Holocaust and genocide studies in the middle school, in the very grade levels where we're seeing this happen. It's not because of that, because we do that every year. It's because of these video games, because we also saw it at the elementary schools. And that's not content that's being taught there. So really, as a parent, when you encounter that or when we reach out to you and say, "This happened", not saying, "Oh, well, he didn't know what that meant", or "She didn't know what that meant". They do know what they, it means. And they know it's not inappropriate. And they're, and we are going to be having, the leadership at the middle school is going to be having conversation with the kids. And the consequence is going to get worse if you break the rule after we have that conversation with you. Not for the first time. This will be the third time this year that the administration is having it. So, we are going to up the ante on the consequences to that mother that asked, when it happens over three times. Yes, it's a different child, but we've told you that we have a zero-tolerance level with this anymore. Because it's not just the swastikas. We found the N-word written on desks and in places. That's serious. And it's not because they heard it in rap music. They understand that it's inappropriate and that what that means. Calling somebody a racial slur like a monkey. We know that that's inappropriate, we know what that means. And so, we need you to be out as outraged as we are when we say, we would give you that call and reinforce it at home. Because no matter what consequence I give, if it's not supported at home, then it just continues. It's like, oh, it's not, it's funny, it's a joke, it's, it's provocative. Let's see how many people we can get to, to be outraged or like, or, or whatever on, on, on social media. One of the reasons why we, we have really tried to shut down the phones is because a lot of this would happen during the school day. And we would see things like going into the bathroom and texting. Now that we've shut that down, we've seen a decrease in those things happening at school, but they're still happening at home at night, when they should be sleeping or they should be doing other things that are, that are more wholesome and, and, and responsible. So really monitoring what your kids are doing with these video games, monitoring with the conversations that they're having, and then calling them out when you hear something that's, that's not right. It's, it's, it's really not kid stuff that they're playing with. It's very adult, very serious, very damaging content they're playing with. And they're at an age where they're, they're impressionable. They don't know it, they, they don't know the consequence of what they're doing and how bad it could get. And we've had issues in this community where somebody, somebody very immature, just a kid, made a very dumb mistake that became very, very public. And that was something that the district couldn't help them unwind. And it affected not just them, but their families in a way that we couldn't fix it. So we really want to just impress upon you that, that we need your help. Somebody asked, "Why don't we have DEI committees?" People didn't come. They got smaller and smaller until the point where we couldn't run them anymore. Because, "Oh, it's not a problem anymore", until it is. Right? So that's why we need to, it doesn't need to be a committee necessarily. It just needs to be us as a community saying, "No, we're not gonna accept this, no more." That, that would be helpful than another night out.
Yeah, and I also want to add, you know, I know what it looked like at my house when the neighbor kids came to play. But let me just say, I get called mom by more than my kids because of the environment that I created. So I'm, I'm sure, you know, you have opportunities that you may not be aware of, either in tandem conversations with your child's friend's parents. My child's older, so I'm asserting, play dates still happen at ages, but definitely as they get older, they're going to, you know, the basement and playing games together. But being ever-present goes without saying. But most importantly, I'm speaking about when your kids bring other kids home and just being present for them. You don't know what life is like for them at home. You're creating an environment for every child that walks in your door with your kid in tow. So, and again, I'm not parenting you. I'm, I'm just recognizing that we have so many kids that we can touch right around us in our neighborhood by nature of who our kids hang out with and bring home.
And to Mrs. Johnson, you asked a question, what resources that we have for your child. Any resources that you need in, in, in support of social, emotional help and all of that. I am so sorry that your child has gone through that. I am so sorry. And having been a child that went through that a lot as a kid, you know, it breaks my heart anytime I hear a kid has to feel that. Unfortunately, in this society, we know that there's always gonna be ugliness in people being mean, no matter what we do. But know that we are here for you and we're gonna continue to fight to make sure there's less and less of that on our watch. But I'm really sorry that you had to go through that. Know we're here in any way that you need for support for you and your children.
I, I have to chime in. I, I think I, I have a unique perspective on this board. Outside of our board president, I'm the only non-white elected member. I also went through this district from kindergarten till my senior year. I walked this, the hallways of this very building. I ate lunch in this cafeteria. I understand and can very deeply relate to, to many of the experiences that some of you have, have felt courageous enough to talk about today. And I do also recognize that, as a fair-skinned South Asian student, I don't go through the same experiences that Black and Latino students in our district do. What I can say is that I have been talking about this issue as a student and as a board member for close to eight years now. And I've worked with Board President Williams Galliano, Dr. Therese, for years pressing this issue because it unfortunately has always been a reactive measure for our district to respond to some of these issues that we're talking about. I would say in the last five years, especially since I've graduated, we've become very proactive. We've had a new administration come in, both on the board and also within the district, that is really cognizant of these issues. So, it's frustrating for me to also see that it takes a swastika getting drawn in the bathroom, it takes slurs being yelled at, at, at our students of color for us to talk about it again as a board. But know that you have an advocate in me, you have an advocate in our superintendent and our board president. And, and it's, it is deeply troubling and frustrating to hear these stories because I, I know the devastating effects it has on our students' confidence, their self-perception, their own identity. Because I had those same issues. And, you know, it, it does take us as a community together to, to stand up for this. And, and one issue that I'm just going to put on everyone's radar is social media, especially platforms like TikTok and YouTube that have algorithms that feed into this rhetoric. What gets clicks? What gets attention from kids who are developing, who are in middle school? It's the, it's the edgy, the extremist, the most flashy talking points that are often filled with the most misguided and hateful rhetoric. So, as much as we can control what our students can, can have access to in our building, a lot of it is also what they have access to after the bus drops them off at 3:30. So, it's, it's, it's a difficult conversation. It's a difficult topic that I know many of our parents care deeply about. But just know that our board takes it very seriously. You always have, all of us, I'm not just, just because I'm the only non-white member doesn't mean my, my fellow board members don't also take this issue very seriously. We're all pushing, you know, for, for, to make Hopewell as inclusive and accessible and equitable as possible. So I thank you all for, for taking the time to give, give us your public testimony. And I, I just want to give some semblance of reassurance there.
I also wanted to chime in, and I know my fellow board member does too, in that echoing, this is a community problem. My children have also all graduated from the district. But as a parent, I heard many of these things through all of their lives going through the district. But I want to challenge not only the district, and we've had these conversations, that when we are recognizing our students, as a district, we tend to recognize the straight A student. We tend to recognize the great athlete. And I have been challenging myself, the district, and the community to start recognizing the empathetic children in our district, the kind children in our district and our communities. When we start lifting them up as the stars, you start to change the narrative of what is important. You know, let's make the captain of the football team not the one with the most touchdowns, but the one who cheers his team on the most, the one who cheers for the underdog. And then we can start changing this community to be more about love and less about hate. And that starts at home. That starts with every single one of us. And so I'm very proud to be serving on this board with our president and our superintendent, who are, you know, blood, sweat, and tears for this community. It's a fight. And we are in a climate right now where being that person isn't rewarded. And so our children are getting these horrible messages. And so we've got to counter it with everything that we have as a district and as a community.
I think, yeah, I know. So I think one of the things that I've been very supportive of with Dr. Therese is this discussion of social media. And I think, as I think about what I want to comment on here, there's a very famous survey that's been going on since the mid-'80s. And the survey talks about the types of things that teenagers between the ages of 13 and 17 have been doing with their free time. This has been a survey that's been done across all genders, all races, all cultures, all economic statuses. And I wish I could tell you the exact citation of this, but I've known this because I talk about it often. In the '80s, the top three things that teenagers did with their free time: family, friends, and community, and faith-based institutions. As of 2025, the top three things they do: social media, gaming, and being alone. That in and of itself is the issue. And if we don't address that and it doesn't start with a community and being at home, we're gonna continue to have the problems that we have today, no matter what's going on in the political environment, unfortunately.
So I've been thinking about what, how to organize what's in my head into a cohesive statement. Let me give it a shot. Antisemitism has been a fact of my life, pretty much all my life. I'm gonna, I live in a place today, I have been for the last three decades, that is way better than where I started. But I've been aware of its existence. And I've always taken an attitude that the, the great thing about my family being here, coming here and being here, and what I've heard today supports that, is that there is a lot of people that don't accept it. And so when it raises its head, it's kind of like a whack-a-mole. You have to take action, you have to address it. But I've always accepted, and I think it's a realistic expectation, it's not something that will be completely eradicated. And to me, that goes to, for any kind of hate. There's always gonna be people like that there. So, this district, I think, does a tremendous amount of, like Drew said, a lot of proactive things to try and address that. The one concern that I have, and it's going to sound interesting, perhaps, but it's something that I've tried to relay to my kids as well. I think we emphasize in teaching our kids the way that the world should be, that it should be free of hate. I don't know that we fully equip them to deal with the world when it turns ugly, both emotionally, but also give them the tools to deal with it. And it came, and it kind of became obvious to me last year at the height of the protests, some of which were antisemitic. And I will admit that not, not all of them, but some clearly were. There was an interview with Jewish students, and I forget what university, and they said that they were angry at their parents and their spiritual Jewish teachers because they, their elders did not prepare them to deal with what was going on. And so, what I, I, and I don't know how we go about it. I was just, I was just trying to put my thoughts cohesively together in my head. But if we can start looking at what we're doing and thinking about, are we? Yes, it's very important that we educate our kids that the way the world should be is it should be free of hate, and it is not acceptable. Hate is not acceptable. But what do you do? How do you emotionally process? And how do you physically deal and live in the world when that hate shows up out in the open? I am hopeful, and being here today confirms my hope, that we will get through as a country through what's going on right now and kind of return to a better normal. But I'm also sure that, even in my own lifetime and for sure in my kids' lifetime, and, right, this will not be the last time that this stuff explodes. Right? And so, again, I think having them prepared, having them being able to deal with that, to me, is very important.
Yeah. I, I, I think, I just want to acknowledge everyone who has spoken, and I don't want to cut anyone off who hasn't had a chance to speak. So I just want to check in with the rest of the board.
Can I add one last piece?
Absolutely.
Just briefly. I think, I want to echo what Mr. Resnick said. Dr. Resnick? Dr. Resnick, I'm sorry. But I, I also want to just give this piece of analysis for everyone. And, and I, I hope that it can be a conversation that can be had in your own circles in the community. A big reason why our students in Hopewell are so susceptible to some of the rhetoric that we see online is the fact that we are a largely racially homogeneous school district. But that's the same for the students in West Windsor, who are operating with a lot of South Asian, East Asian students. It's the same for students in Trenton, in Ewing. We live in a highly segregated county, one of the most segregated counties in the state, and frankly, along the East Coast. We don't think about it like that, but that is what the statistics show us. And that is a larger systemic condition that allows some of this hateful actions and, and behaviors to grow and fester and become cancers that, that surface in some of these instances that we're talking about today. So, in, in the Government Relations Committee report out, I talk about some of the things that we're actively pushing for, which is working with some of our neighboring school districts to do simple integrative measures. It doesn't mean that you have to institute mandated school busing. It could mean something as simple as having a pen pal with the neighboring school district from the time you're a first grader. So you're able to talk to someone, form a relationship, and, and speak to people who come from a different background and environment than you do. Because these types of discriminatory behaviors, they are learned, and they are often learned from untaught lessons and a lack of exposure. The more we talk to each other, the harder it is to, to say some of those hateful things. So just wanted to add that, that piece about the segregation that we see in our community.
So, Ms. Williams, if I could just add this really quickly, because I don't think I, I touched on one of the, the comments, and then I want to move the meeting along. I know we got a lot to do yet. There was also a question about our staff. Now, as we look at budget and folks have been asking about specific line items in our budget, part of our values and how we spend money is what we value as a district and a community. So yes, we spend lots, we spend lots of money, not lots of money, but we have spent lots of money over the years out of Title II. Not as much as we probably should, but we spend within what that cap is it provided us with Title II and Title IV, to train our staff in specific things around making sure that our schools are welcoming for everyone. So those line items that people have been asking about that do that, that's why. We don't want our teachers engaging in language that's also making kids feel unsafe in the classroom or behaving in activities that don't. We want them to implement curriculum that teaches kids what these things mean. But they need to be able to do that because they know the information and they can do it and enter to the safe space safely. So yes, we do spend money on that because it's important and we value that. We can't just work on the kids and ask you to do it if we're not. We can't just work on the kids and ask you to do it if we're not working on the adults that spend a good portion of the day with your children as well.
Awesome. So I will just put a final point on the issue, and that is, we're going to need to keep working together. This isn't the last conversation, it is an ongoing conversation, and we, we just are going to need to point to it when it's not a match for who we say we are as a community. And most certainly, I would say that the balance, when we, when we talk about DEI and, you know, inclusivity, we're talking about helping people understand that hate is hate, that if you don't include everyone, you're missing opportunities, like Mr. Kapadia just mentioned, where they get to interact with someone who is not the same as them. If we ask the same of everyone, they don't understand what it looks like or how to behave when someone is different from them. So as a public school system, that is our requirement. We are mandated by law to include every single child, identity, race, et cetera. So that is the environment we are demand for your children to have, and we need to recognize that collectively so that we can participate in ensuring our kids feel safe. The last thing I'm going to say is that helping our kids get steely and understand the world out there, there is an undue burden on our children who are the least of these, who are not the same, that have identities that are not like the majority, right? We put an undue burden on them to be steely and tough. And I know that's not what Dr. Resnick is saying, but I want to underscore the point of, we need to collectively build resilience? That is the work of SCL, right? Because we want all our kids to have it. But we also need to recognize, when we put undue pressure on a child that has three hibs against them, to bear the weight, the emotional burden. We need to stop asking that of our babies. We need to stop. So I ask you, again, everyone is in their own evolution of this matter, but every single one of us has an opportunity, the more when we look at our kids and send them off to school, who do we want them to be? Who do we want them to be to their peers? Who do they, we want them to be when they come home to us? And I promise you, this board will support you in every way possible to ensure your kids have the tools, that you have what you need as parents, but we cannot do it alone. And we certainly cannot put the burden on our children who don't match the rest of the larger population. We just can't. And with that, I'm going to wrap us up and move us along, but thank you, thank you, thank you for the participation. That also means public comment is now closed. I have to say that. All right. Board members, any old business items? Seeing none? I need a first and second to pass the consent agenda items on.
Motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstaining? Seeing none, consent agenda items are passed. We're going to go ahead and move to all of our community, sorry, committee updates. And so as usual, we will start with finance and facilities. Mr. Peters?
So I know we haven't really talked a lot about finance tonight, so I'll make this nice and long.
Haven't heard anything about it.
Okay, so the committee meeting met about a week ago. We spent a lot of time talking about the budget, as was alluded to in the discussion that Mr. Colavito gave. I think a lot of the board members had a tremendous amount of discussion over the past seven days, to talk about a tremendous amount of things that were presented. On top of that, we spent a considerable amount of time talking about the second other big rock in the community is the referendum discussion. We talked a little bit about the proposal that came from Hopewell Township, which we'll get into some more detail on in the future, about how they may be a part of contributing to some of that. The committee was able to ask some questions there, and we got some answers on some potential next steps. Kudos to Dr. Therese and Mr. Colavito for continuing to push that with the township. It seems like we are making some, some momentum there. We also got an update from our facility side of things. As Dr. Resnick alluded to, every month when we meet, we do go into detail about the types of projects that they're working on internally, which gives us an opportunity to ask questions and make some good understanding of, really, quite frankly, the money we save with, with what's going on internally today in the district. Two of the major items that came up was around the boiler project at the high school that's continuing on. We also were alerted to at Bear Tavern, what was going on there with some heat pumps, which were in the referendum, that actually failed, and us having to make some emergency action to get that, get that taken care of, which is a large part of what this referendum is about, making sure that we can avoid these emergency actions and get a longer-term strategic plan in place. So there was some additional discussion there about how we close that budget gap, but as, as we saw tonight from, from Mr. Colavito's presentation, we feel like we're in a good spot. Lastly, I'll just make maybe one or two comments that I didn't make, as the finance chair during this, that I think is important to share. I've been a broken record about this for probably the past six months with the community. I've been a broken record about this for the past three years, sitting on the board. I joined the board explicitly for finance-related items. I think the general public would look at me and probably go, "You are cheap, you are frugal, you don't like to spend money." I think that I like to try to do more with less sometimes. I have learned a hell of a lot when it comes to how education needs to be budgeted. For me, and for my position, right, as the finance chair, and I speak only for myself when I say this, as the board, and as we listen to the type of feedback that's given from what I would consider the executives of the district, I feel very confident and comfortable that the current budget that's been proposed is going to do what the finance committee asked for it to do, which was to try to minimize disruption and maximize what we've always done. And in an environment that exists today, that's nearly impossible. And let me tell you why. Eighty-five percent of our budget, our costs are larger than our revenue. When that happens over a long period of time, we face what we faced today. There's no way around that. I've said this many times at public meetings, and I'll continue to say it, this is not a Hopewell problem, this is a Trenton problem. We are limited by what the state enables us to do or not do. And sometimes that's favorable, other times that's not. We remain in a situation today where Dr. Therese and the rest of the executives of the district have to make tough decisions. And the tough decisions that have to be made do have an impact. I don't think there's a single board member that doesn't recognize and realize that. However, the alternative to what these things are is to ultimately do one thing that nobody really wants to talk about: cut. So when we talk about things that aren't fun, having to put activity fees back, having to put sports fees back, having to deal with courtesy bussing, if you add those numbers up, that is teachers. Those are teachers that we get to keep here. That's the alternative. So as a board and as the finance committee, our goal is to try to minimize that disruption as much as we can. And for me, I have to continue to trust the CEO, the CFO, and the rest of the executives that are here, that, A, they know more than I do when it comes to their specialty, right? When I, when we hear about curriculum, when we hear about special education, when we hear about finances at an education level, I don't think there's anybody at the board that can say that they know more than what these folks do. And I share that with the community to say that I feel that they are doing a tremendous job with trying to meet what we asked them to do: minimum disruption, maximize what's always happened, with what they've put forward in the budget. It's not fun. I don't think there's many people that, if I said, "Hey, raise your hand if you like paying taxes," that you'd raise your hand, right? Not many people can say that. But at the end of the day, we have a special community, we have a special school district, and that sometimes means that we have to do these give and takes. And the give that we have to give as a community right now is if we're going to continue to expect the type of programming, the type of great education we get from really, really good teachers and really, really good administration, we're going to pay some more money. It's tough to say it, but it's true. Any other trade-off is going to result in things that we're going to have other people upset about. So I share this with you to say that it's not over. As Bob alluded to, we have another month that we're going to talk about this. And I would encourage you, if you have any questions, to come and talk to your Board of Education Representatives. We all like to talk, right? You can hear it tonight. We all like to get on mic and talk for the most part, right? We want to hear what you have to say. But just keep in mind that our number-one goal, more than anything, is minimizing the disruption and maximizing what we've always done.
Thank you, Mr. Peters.
I second that.
All right. Thank you. I'm going to move us on to personnel.
Hello again. Told you I like to talk. Okay. So we met this evening, like we always do before every board meeting, and we had a chance to talk about a couple items. The first item we talked about was we had another retirement. Ms. Leo Parti from Hopewell Elementary School, twenty-five years in the district, so thank you, congratulations to you. We so much appreciate hearing of the folks that can spend so much time with us and have such a huge impact on the kids and impact on the community. Not easy, it's bittersweet, like I've said before, and we're going to miss her, but we are excited for her and what her retirement entails. We also spent some time talking about extracurricular appointments. And then, third, we spent a little bit of time, Tana talked to us about the resolution here that we are going to authorize in the consent agenda, right? Is that consent? Okay, thank you, which you can see on the agenda. That's about it. Nice and brief. You're welcome.
Awesome. Thank you. So we need a first.
And the resolution is?
Sorry. Yeah, that's a good question. So this is a resolution that just allows us to authorize the affirmative action team to conduct a needs assessment and develop the comprehensive equity plan that's in the school years, '25, '26 through '27, '28. I'm going to butcher this, Tana, so if you just want to clarify this for the group, you can, as to why we're doing it, that'd be great.
I think you're doing a great job.
Yes, excellent. That was it.
You want me to go? Go ahead.
So the CEP, or the Comprehensive Equity Plan, is something that we have done before. It is a requirement by the state. The last one was back in 2019. Yeah, what year is it? Twenty twenty-five? Sorry, it's been a long day. 2019 was the last one, and the state kept postponing their release of the new requirements. So over the last few years, they kept saying, "We're going to come out with new requirements, so just keep what you have." Well, they finally released in January, and guess what? It's due in June. However, we have been working on it as part of our process, so we have been updating and keeping things moving. You might know, notice that all of the policies that's going through the policy committee have been updated, because when we started looking, those were really old and needed a lot of updates. So part of that was because of us already working on and, and looking at our processes and doing those needs assessments. So this is just the board stating. Tana, go ahead and start with the committee, since I'm the affirmative action officer for the district, and then we're going to put everything together, and then we'll submit for your approval later this year. Awesome. Thank you. So we do need to take a roll call vote, so I need a first and a second.
Motion.
Okay. Roll call.
Mr. Kapadia?
Yes.
Dr. Liliston?
Yes.
Mr. Peters?
Yep.
Dr. Resnick?
Yes.
Mr. Slotman?
Hi.
Dr. Silianno?
Yes.
Dr. Wilson?
Yes.
Dr. Genovasi?
Yes.
Ms. Williams-Galliano?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Moving on to education programming.
Sure. This is going to be, after all the other discussions, this may be a little bit counter, anticlimactic, but there are a couple of interesting things to talk about. So I'll start near the end, and then I'll go back to the beginning. So let's start with the easy stuff. We had Ms. Roth come and provide us an overview of both what she's accomplished in her short time leading the counseling team here, and an overview and her vision for what she's going to do next. I have to say, an excellent presentation, so that was awesome. We had a field trip proposed for the, for, for our chamber singers to go abroad, which sounds really good, but is also quite expensive. So given the situation that we're in now, I think Dr. Pilatus is working with them to see if we can figure out some way to rein those costs in, but if not, we may unfortunately have to not authorize that trip. And I think that goes along with the point that was made, that, you know, as part of what we're trying to do with the budget, we're really going to try and control the cost of the field trips. So that was the quick one. Now, for the rest of it, I'll preface that, one of the things that I enjoy, having been on the education committee since I joined the board, so this is now the start of my fourth year, is getting to look at and review all the various research proposals from folks who come to the district, and basically want to work with our district. And it's usually on ways to improve the way we teach kids. I have a very limited sample size of one district, so I don't know for sure if we do more of this than other districts, but I get the sense from people that come here that they really enjoy working with Hopewell Valley. And we, as a district, get a benefit of those studies because we get access to what they do, we get some, some training for our staff. So in our meeting, we actually had three proposals that we got to look at. So we had a proposal from a team that included Dr. Bailey from Montclair on teaching math with technology. We had a proposal from the Drexel Academy, and I'm going to butcher it, Jackie, but you can correct me, from the Drexel Academy of Sciences and Technology, and I, Drexel University's Academy of Sciences, I think. And it, and this proposal is really to look at social and emotional learning, and how aspects of SCL impact our kids' abilities to succeed in both learning and, you know, taking a STEM pathway further in life. And then we had a Ms. Flanagan from, and I, BSCS, who is, who has worked with Dr. Anguini probably prior, but she came back with a new proposal to, I'm looking at my notes. So she came back with a new proposal, and maybe Vicky can fill in too. Yeah.
It was about testing performance tasks in the science classroom.
Okay. Thank you for bailing me out here, trying to read my notes. So, big picture, I think we gave an okay to all three proposals. Two of them, we need some further details to go along with the proposal from Drexel University. That's a proposal that's going to be developed, so that's not yet a, something that is ready to be implemented, because we'll be applying for a grant. One of the things that the committee has asked for in particular from the PCBS team is that we find ways to, so for the students who are going to participate, and, and it's always with permission of parents, it's always anonymous, it never affects the kid's grade, but for those kids who do participate in a study, that they will also be exposed to the research process. So that they be given an overview of what the research is about, how it works, why it works, right, what the process is going to be. So this is going to create an opportunity for those kids who may be thinking about a career path into research to really start understanding what that's about. And that's about it.
Thank you, Dr. Resnick. Moving on, community relations.
Hi. We met last week. Apologies to my fellow board members, I haven't had a chance to type up some official notes, so hopefully- so hopefully this will serve that purpose. And of course, Drew and Jackie and Anita, Dr. Treese, I think you were all there on that meeting, so please feel free to jump in if anything I might miss. We had a meeting on the 13th. We went quite a bit over time. A lot of discussion with the recently passed referendum in Princeton. I think it was around $89 million. Had the opportunity to hear more about their strategies, I'll say, in terms of, you know, how they presented their referendum, and how it ended up passing back at the end of January, and talk a little bit about how Lawrence had just passed a referendum as well. They just passed one, I think, last week, right? $94 million in Lawrence as well. So that was a really great discussion to hear more from those couple of especially Princeton successful referendum efforts, and hopefully we'll be able to better inform our process as we move forward here from now until the end of the year. Dr. Treese, we also talked about the referendum communications committee that we had mentioned in the last meeting. I know that some invitations were sent out, so we expect to have that meeting in the near future, though I think it's on the same day that we're talking about.
It is. I decided to leave it. I think we're okay for that one, but keep moving the other one.
Okay. Great. So that'll be upcoming, so looking forward to participating in that discussion. Honestly, the meeting, the, almost the entire time was spent talking about referendum topics and sort of that strategy. So looking forward to, you know, moving that engagement forward, moving forward. On a personal note, I will mention, we did briefly talk about, something I mentioned last time, was kind of board member attendance at future meetings, and I will note the Hopewell Valley Education Foundation Above and Beyond Gala is this Friday, the 21st, so would encourage folks to attend if they can. I'll unfortunately be at the Hopewell Valley Children's Theater performance at the same time, so I feel like I get a pass for that one. But, but for those who are able to attend, certainly encourage it, and we'll be working sort of on a, on a plan moving forward where we can kind of get ourselves out there and, you know, be in the community as much as possible. Jackie, Drew, anything that I didn't miss that you wanted, or I did miss that you'd like to raise for the group?
And one more plug for the HVF and their gala that's this Friday coming up. That money does, the money that they raise at that function, not only do they honor our teachers, our educators of the year, and our support people of the year, but they give money back to the schools through grants for our folks. This year, they're holding it at the, at the Hopewell Valley Winery, and so it's going to be a very nice evening, there's going to be live entertainment, it's a good time. So if you can join us, please, you can go right online. I think there's a button right on our website for the fundraiser as well, where you can just go right and buy tickets. So we'd love to see you there.
Did you have? Okay. Yep, go ahead. Pass it.
Okay. So I'm reporting for SEL. We talked about a lot of different things at SEL. So we are going to be celebrating Inclusivity Month in April around learning differences. The PTO, the Strive PTO, has a lot of great activities going on, so if you're not aware of what they're doing, please go on their website, but they're going to be doing a car wash. They do just regularly father outings, mother outings, kid outings. They're going to have some videos up. There are new parents leading Strive too. So like, you know, if you haven't been involved before, even if you have, you know, join. Like, we've got new people coming in all the time, so it is something that everyone can be involved in. I wanted to alert people that coming up soon, we're going to have three new sessions for the nurtured heart training. So some of these things that we've been talking about in the meeting on building resilience, helping our children, a lot of these things I'm going to be talking about right now. We also are a Rutgers Health clinician, will have a family webinar coming up on mental health. We have in our district also, for our students with the greatest need, we have a therapist that is specialized in childhood trauma. That's a great resource for our students. We are working right now to implement next year some Tier Two supports, so all students get our Tier One supports, and then students who might have a little bit greater need, we have Tier Two supports. And so we're looking, right now, we're meeting with all of our elementary schools and looking at the Tier Two supports that are offered through our Character Strong Intervention. And so next year, we'll be implementing them in all of our elementary schools. We've also been exploring other school districts' SEL websites, so that we can kind of bolster Hopewell's website, so that those resources are really easily available to our parents and our community to help them out. We also have coming May 21st at the high school, Jordan Toma is coming. Those of you who might have children with IEPs, Jordan is an inspirational speaker. He has a book out, "I'm Just a Kid With an IEP." I highly recommend reading it. Just a really great inspirational teacher. And then, I think, I think I got everything there. Yeah. All right.
Thank you. Any questions? Okay, moving on, Mr. Kapadia. Government relations.
All right. The Government Relations Committee convened on March 13th to continue advancing its mission of enhancing engagement with government leaders, advocating for state funding and policy solutions, and exploring sustainable structures for long-term government relations efforts. Since the last meeting, the committee has taken several actions to advance local government engagement. Invitations have been extended to mayors, township committee members, and town council members in Hopewell Township, Hopewell Borough, and Pennington Borough for the remaining school building tours. We just had one today for Stony Brook before the meeting. Additionally, emails have been sent to the 15th Legislative District delegation to request their availability for a rescheduled tour of Bear Tavern Elementary School. In terms of state-level advocacy, the committee has requested a meeting with Assemblywoman Reynolds Jackson's office to discuss key policy and funding priorities, namely our FY26 budget request for an ADA-accessible playground at Bear Tavern. Additionally, recognizing the Assemblywoman's recent appointment as Chair of the Assembly Education Committee, the Government Relations Committee aims to discuss HVRSD's unique policy concerns, including student growth rate fueled by local development, constraints around the 2% tax levy cap, and rising operational costs. Additionally, the committee seeks to highlight the need for increased funding for ESL and marginalized students, especially in light of ongoing volatile federal action. To explore sustainable models for government relations, the committee has also initiated outreach to our board attorney to gain insight into the legal guidelines and feasibility of establishing a standing government relations committee, so that we can maintain consistent advocacy and communication with legislators and municipal officials. Outside of all of that, we did also have time to address some new agenda items. The committee reviewed the recent resolution adopted by the Asbury Park Board of Education, which declared itself a safe space for marginalized communities in response to federal executive orders. Garden state equality and other grassroots advocacy organizations have been encouraging other districts to follow suit. The committee considered whether adopting a similar resolution would be a meaningful step for HVRSD, but ultimately decided to conduct an informal listening tour with marginalized communities to better understand their experiences, anxieties, and concerns in the wake of volatile federal action. And I think this informal listening tour will also complement a lot of the discussions that we've had today about instances of bias in our schools. The committee also discussed potentially, a key word, potentially, endorsing the policy to allow 16 and 17-year-olds to vote in school board elections. To be clear, this decision ultimately falls under a municipal jurisdiction, but our board can endorse, support, and advocate for the initiative if we choose to do so. For background, Newark is the first municipality in the state to adopt the policy, which will take effect next month during its April school board elections. The committee plans to engage with the full board in the coming weeks to gauge members' positions and gather input. Future steps may involve discussions with municipal governments and considering a formal resolution based on board feedback. Finally, the committee discussed opportunities for county-level outreach and cross-district collaboration. As I talked about earlier, Mercer County's persistent school segregation along racial and socioeconomic lines presents an opportunity for joint initiatives, such as a county-wide field day or a PENPAL program to foster integration. The committee plans to reach out to the Mercer County Superintendent to gauge interest on these initiatives and to consult with neighboring district administrations. So next steps include rescheduling our Bear Tavern tour with the LD15 legislators, engaging Assemblywoman Reynolds Jackson's office on the FY26 budget requests and policy concerns, continuing seeking legal insight on establishing a standing government relations committee, and advancing discussions on local resolutions and county-level collaboration initiatives.
Thank you.
I have questions.
What?
I do.
Go.
So, Drew, these invitations that the committee sent, these invitations that the committee sent, what's the response like to the invitations?
So from...
Because I didn't see any township committee members on the tour of Stony Brook.
So for, well, the Hopewell Borough Mayor attended our Bear Tavern tour.
Okay, yes.
The LD15 delegation, actually, I just heard back from Assemblyman Varelli today, so he's actively looking to reschedule for early April. We'll see depending on his schedule. And then, Hopewell Township Committee has gotten back to me, expressing interest in, especially visiting Bear Tavern for when we reschedule it. I haven't heard anything from Pennington Borough.
Oh, okay. Lovely. All right. Well, I, I, I'm actually happy to hear that you're getting a response on this. The other thing that I wanted to comment on is the countywide initiatives. I don't know if you recall Dr. Treese on the board, but sometime back, when we were talking about engaging our school community and the kids in, or increasing civic engagement, one of the requests that I made was to find ways to expose them to kids their age that have different life experiences, just because of where they've grown up. And we talked about how county is probably the place to start, because it's the easiest, right? So I'm happy to hear that you're exploring that, because I, I'd like to see us do something like that.
Absolutely. Thank you. That was a really helpful report out. I just had one comment about the initiative you spoke about, where the, you were speaking to the municipalities about potentially endorsing this proposal to have 16, 17-year-olds vote in school board elections. And I just thought this would be a great place for us to engage our student representative and also just members of the student body, both to hear their opinions on it. I mean, do they care? Right? First of all. But second of all, if there is an effort to sort of go to the municipalities and to speak about this, particularly if it's in support of it, bringing a student with you to really talk about what the importance is of an initiative like this.
Yeah. No, that's, that's very helpful.
Yeah, we definitely need to get Ms. Lee involved with that conversation.
Yeah. And we, and we wouldn't also, you know, reach out in any type of, taking any specific stance without the board's approval as a whole, so just...
Yeah, exactly. Awesome. Wonderful. Okay, we're going to move on to policy. Dr. Liliston.
Okay. So the policy committee met on Monday, March 3rd. We reviewed one regulation, and we have one policy and regulation up for first reading, four policies and one regulation up for second reading. So first, in response to questions and concerns that have been brought to the board from the community, the policy committee reviewed Regulation 8451, Communicable Disease, which includes language related to head lice. The committee reviewed the regulation as it relates to the lice protocols that are currently being implemented by the district. The regulation lays out a set of procedures for identification of and response to over a dozen illnesses and ailments, of which head lice is one. So the regulation says that students showing specific symptoms should be sent to the school nurse for evaluation. The school nurse will then examine the student and make a recommendation as to whether or not that student should be excluded from school for medical reasons. This regulation ensures that medical professionals, rather than sort of a rigid policy, really guide decisions based on clinical best practices. So after reviewing the school's lice protocol, the committee did determine that it is in compliance with our current regulation, and also that it aligns with guidelines from the American Academy of Pediatrics, the National Association of School Nurses, the New Jersey Department of Health, and the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention. The committee also felt that the current regulation appropriately leaves decision-making to the medical professionals, and that creating specific policies for each condition would really not be in the best interest of the district, as it would really limit our ability to adapt medical protocols as needed to align with changing evidence and best practices in the field. So while we're not recommending changes to the regulation at this time, we do recognize the importance of really clear and timely communication with families. And moving forward, the district really has enhanced communication efforts to ensure that families are well-informed about our health protocols and our responses to cases within our schools. School nurses will also be following up with families where a lice case has been identified to serve as a resource and also to ensure treatment around that case. So now we have one policy and regulation up for first reading. So can I have a motion and a second to bring Policy and Regulation 2423, Bilingual Education, up for first reading?
Motion.
Second. Third.
Okay, great. So Policy and Regulation 2423, Bilingual Education, lays out the expectation and the process by which the district will identify multilingual learners and provide bilingual education, English as a second language, and culturally and linguistically responsive language instruction educational programs, also called LEAP. I think, is that L-I-E-P? Do they call it LEAP? LEAP. So multilingual learners are students whose primary language is not English and who have varying degrees of English language proficiency. So the district currently has about 30 students with over 30 languages, who are considered multilingual learners. We do not currently have a bilingual program due to the relatively low number of multilingual learners. Bilingual education is only required when there are 20 or more K through 12 students who speak one specific non-English language. We do, however, provide SEL, which is required, ESL, excuse me, which is required when there are 10 or more multilingual learners in K through 12. So this policy and regulation were last revised by the board in 2023, and the current revisions that you see here reflect recent amendments to the state code around bilingual education in public schools. The amendments address the services multilingual learners need to meet or exceed the New Jersey Student Learning Standards to reach graduation and post-secondary success. So in particular, revisions to the policy further define multilingual learner, make clear that students enrolled in language instruction educational programs will have access to educational opportunities and services available to other students in the school district, and you'll see that the titles of both the policy and regulation have changed to bilingual education as well. Anything from my policy colleagues that you'd like to add to that conversation? No? Okay. Any questions from the board or comments? All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed or abstaining? Okay. So can I have a motion and a second to bring Policy and Regulation 5600, Student Discipline Code of Conduct, Policy 9163, Spectator Code of Conduct, Policy 2365, Acceptable Use of Generative Artificial Intelligence, and Policy 5701, Academic Integrity, up for first reading? Okay.
First reading or second reading?
Second reading.
To clarify, that was second reading.
Sorry, up for second reading. Yep. Okay. All right. So I'm not going to spend a lot of time going over these policies, because we reviewed them at length in the last board meeting, but the committee did incorporate suggested revisions based on feedback that we... based on feedback that we received during the last board meeting. So I'll just briefly go through the revisions that we incorporated. So for policy and revision, and regulation 5600, the Student Discipline Code of Conduct, we revise this regulation to include an expectation in the policy that disaggregated data related to the student code of conduct be reported back to the board, including counts of school and out-of-school suspensions, use of restorative justice practices, and threat assessments. For the Spectator Code of Conduct, we received no comments on this policy, so it stands as it did for first reading. For policy 2365, Acceptable Use of Generative Artificial Intelligence, we received quite a bit of feedback back from the board, and thank you, Dr. Resnick in particular. So we did expand the language in this policy to include generative AI and non-generative AI. We added language indicating that any individual affiliated with the school district must comply with the district AI plan and policy. And we also indicated that teachers can only use district-approved AI platforms to determine if there's a violation of the academic integrity policy. For policy 5701, Academic Integrity, we also here made a revision so that we were referring to both generative and non-generative AI, based on the feedback that we received from the board. So I'll stop there and see if there's any questions or comments from the board or from the policy committee members.
Just a quick add-on on the AI policy. So thank you very much for incorporating the revisions. I took a look at those, those are fine. Just to make a note, right, a lot of the meat is in the AI plan that the policy only refers to, and it's being developed. So I just want to make sure that when that plan is finalized, it goes up for review, at least with the policy committee, and hopefully with the whole board. I don't know that we need to approve it or not approve it, but we should at least get to take a look at it as a board.
Yeah, we can absolutely request that. Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
And I would just like to add, when we're developing that guidelines for using AI, that we take into consideration, especially with our special ed students, that AI can be a great tool.
Any other questions, concerns? Okay. Bob, I think it's a roll call vote.
Dr. Liliston.
Yes.
Mr. Peters.
Yep.
Dr. Resnick.
Yes.
Mr. Schlotman. Dr. Stilliano. Dr. Wilson.
Yes.
Dr. Genovasi.
Yes.
Mr. Capadia.
Yes.
Ms. Williams-Galliano.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, I think that covers all of our, right, committees. Moving on, need a first and second for calendars.
Second.
Wow. That was big energy over there.
Big energy.
All right, so we'll get the easy one out of the way. Personnel, April 28th, 6 o'clock. Sounds good. Finance, I was thinking sometime during the week of the 14th, preferably the 14th, but...
Of April?
Or the 15th. Yeah, April.
14th is good for me. What time?
8:00 AM.
What's that?
8:00.
You guys need Monday mornings.
That's what works for everybody, though. Just gotta do it.
Yeah.
8:00 AM on the 14th?
All right, 8:00 AM on the 14th.
Did you know there's nothing in there? I have to look.
I had a request if we could move our ed program to, during the daytime, which we can, if that's okay with everybody else on the committee.
I know, to defer this to the other committee members.
Okay.
I think it just depends when, but yeah.
Anita, so I was looking at just the week of the 21st, of April 21st.
Is it possible to do the week before, I'm traveling.
Could we do maybe the week before then, maybe like the week of the 7th?
Sure.
Okay. What time, like what times in the day would be well? Good. No, no. No, no. Okay.
I can, sorry, I can do early the week of the 21st. Can we do the actual 21st?
Yeah, I can do the 21st, yeah. What time, I'm good anytime before, anytime between, not at 12 to 1, but anything else works.
I'm also wide open, so I can...
Easter month.
Yeah, the 21st is Easter month, which is fine for me.
Okay.
Yeah, we're all back.
I don't, it does, it's a...
It's a regular school days.
Okay, we're fine. Yeah.
No, it's not. No.
No. Okay. Okay, so, okay, so the, how is 9 on the 21st?
What time?
9.
Okay, that works.
Okay. Anita, good. Okay, thank you.
What do we think about policy?
Policy, you're going to try to look at it and get the stat.
Mm-hmm. I can do the week of the 14th. Are people available on the 14th? You guys available on the 14th for policy?
Yeah.
Piggyback, uh...
We can do it, we can piggyback it right after, we can do it at 9 o'clock if that works for you.
I can, I can do that. Can you do 9:00 AM?
9:00 AM on the 14th?
Can you do? No, not 9:00. Okay. How about 11?
11 works too.
11? Okay.
Mm-hmm. Got it.
April 24th at 8:00 AM?
April 24th.
April 24th at 8:00 AM. Does that work?
It's on the...
Yeah, I can make it work.
Community Relations and the Government one.
Should I do it for Government? Okay. How does the 10th or 11th, April 10th, Thursday?
April 10th is good for me, anytime.
Thursday, April 10th. What about the 11th? Okay. All right.
9? 9?
Yeah, you do the 9th.
What time?
It'd have to be like afternoon, like 1 o'clock.
I'm good after. I can do 1 o'clock as long as we're done by 2:00.
Yeah. 1 o'clock on the 9th?
Government, Relations, yeah.
Did we do Finance and Facilities?
That was the first one.
Okay. What time was it, the 14th?
14th, yes.
8:00 AM?
That was the one all early, just blocked it out.
Thank you.
Wait, 1, 2...
Yes. The 17th? Let's give that in. 17, 8:00 AM. Let me get over there and see what my schedule. I'm usually fine that early in the morning. 8:00 AM works for me. Everybody else good for Community Relations, Thursday to 17?
I, wait, 8:00 AM here is, where am I? I did, that's what I'm trying to figure out what state I'm in. Chicago.
One hour.
One hour.
So 7 o'clock.
Is it behind her? Behind her.
Yeah, she would be 7:00.
So it'd be 7:00 AM for you, is that okay?
I think so, because I don't think I'll be in meetings yet. Let me, I think that's okay.
Okay.
I feel like I shouldn't have a 7:00 o'clock meeting.
Okay, they do.
But let's see. All in favor?
Aye. Aye. Aye.
Any opposed or abstaining?
That wasn't too bad.
Okay. Those calendars are passed.
Busy people, busy people.
Y'all awake out there? Just checking. Any new business items?
It's not really new business, but I just wanted to say thank you to all the folks who stay here, because by this time, we're usually looking at a very empty room.
It's nice to have company.
So thank you very much for staying and sitting through some of this admittedly rather boring stuff.
Okay, seeing no business, new business, we're going to go ahead and move into our second public comment. I know we've had a lot this evening, but we had two special public comment sections. So this public comment section invites the public to address the board on any matter for a maximum of three minutes during this portion of the meeting. You're asked to state your name, address, and municipality. In response to your comments, the Board of Ed may respond or direct the superintendent to do so. The board may also opt to take up the matter at a future meeting so that the matter is researched by the district administration. Public comment is now open.
Hello, to me and McQueen again at Pennington. When I was here, up here earlier, one of the things I wanted to do was second the conversation or the comment of the parent who mentioned male mentors for our students. I have a daughter in high school who's had two incidences with young men, one more aggressive situation and one where it was just inappropriate hands. I am who I am, and so I told her, you know, the first time, she hadn't told me she handled it, and she told me how she handled it. It's not a reason for her to get in trouble at home, so I let it go. Or I should say, I was comfortable with how she handled it. The second situation, she told me about it when it happened. I told her she had one shot to handle it. We tried to encourage them to manage it on their own first, and she handled it. But sitting here, listening to some of the parents, it made me wonder how many children have not yet found their voice and couldn't handle it on their own. And so I reiterate, and second, the conversation and the comment of the parent who said we could really use more males to mentor our young men as they become young men in managing relationships and emotions. But yes, that was it. Thank you.
Do I have to sign a second time? This will be great, you guys got to stand there, it's like 10 o'clock. I'll sign when I'm done. Joseph Beavis, Titus Philbaks slash Hopewell Township, speaking as, look, I wrote it down, speaking as a white, Christian, straight male. I welcome any opportunity. Call me. Happy to have any conversation I can. I stand in privilege, and I feel it, and I know it. I also welcome everyone to eliminate the abbreviation DEI. Say every word. And, Dr. Yu had said that there were committees and that the population that was attending dwindled. Everyone here is well aware that a large issue we have is that we have no collective memory of our history. So if you notice that, if you reinstate the committees and you notice that they are dwindling in number, remind us of our history and what has happened even three years ago, and you will likely get another wave of people. It's just the fact that we keep forgetting what happens and we think it's solved, and it's not. And I will give credit to the history, my kids are 10th graders in the high school. I will give a lot of credit to the AP US History course there. They teach history really well. So, oh, got to sign.
Thank you.
I'm not sure if this is for you, Dr. Treese, or you, Mr. Capadia, or both. I have not stopped thinking about the community issue at hand here. I am remembering back about eight years ago where there was a call to action where all Mercer County superintendents, community members, parents came together for another purpose. We had a huge uptick in Mercer County, the loss of lives of our young adults, and it was a call to action for all communities within Mercer County. So I'm wondering, utilizing that, and wondering, is this information, Dr. Treese, that is being shared amongst all other Mercer County school districts, are other superintendents reporting the same incidents, the same concerns, the same areas that need attention? And would it behoove us as a county to, again, have another call to action, especially in these times of rising volatile nationwide behaviors happening, to have potentially something like this again as it relates to the issues that we're seeing? I hear it mainly at the middle school level, but I will tell you, it's happening at the high school. I'm certain that it's happening in elementary school, so I don't think it's unique just to Timberlane. I think it is across the board. And then I guess with that, if that were to take a step forward, is there opportunity for the community to become involved and participate in that? That's it.
I'm also an AP US History student at Hopewell Valley, and I can second that the teachers do a very nice job. And one of the things that we were talking about just the other day in class was how they go about teaching events like 9/11. And one of the things that we came to a consensus on, as that class and also the teacher, was that the way that it is taught is a little bit outdated. It kind of still assumes that the people learning it were a lot, even alive during 9/11. And as someone who's learning about it right now, that event, you know, is older, it happened seven years before I was born. I think that some of the same is true with how we teach about bullying and about discrimination, and specifically, social media's role in it. As a student, I believe our first introduction to like anti-bullying and anti-discrimination in wellness was in middle school. And throughout kind of the last five years of my education, there hasn't really been a lot about social media's role in the rise of, in the rise of bullying and discrimination among my generation. And I honestly do not know how the curriculum has changed in that regard, but the kind of, the way that we are taught about bullying and discrimination, it kind of almost seems outdated. And it also kind of seems like students aren't as interested, or students can't pay attention to those kind of subjects as well as they should, and that just the whole way that it is taught could use, could use an improvement. And I think we would see a reduction in, in some of these events that have been going on.
Good evening. I'm Suze Polinsky. Some of you probably know that I stood up here and talked about healthy tech use and how important it is to me. I had a Timberlane student say to me this week, how do I think it feels to them that the punishment for having their phone out of their yonder pouch is more than for using a racial slur or another type of slur? And I don't think that student is right, but it really matters that that's what they think, that their perception is, that slurs are frequent and sometimes met with an eye roll or being ignored. So I encourage, as everyone here has mentioned and underlined, that we continue to take opportunities, not to look the other way, not to just be disappointed, but to meet... opportunities not to look the other way, not to just be disappointed, but to meet every mistake that these students make with real consequences and real conversation, maybe conversation more than consequences. And I'll echo something that's been both demonstrated and said. I don't know if my numbers are right right now, but at some point in the last five years when I lived here, they were. We're about a 90% white district, and the community members and neighbors that came out tonight to speak on behalf of our kids are carrying a pretty heavy load. I speak as one of the 90%, and not a lot of us had a lot to say about what's happening to kids in our district, so I hope we will come out and do more work. Thank you.
Kat Hogan, Hopewell Township. I, what the young man shared sparked something in my brain that I know, I remember there were conversations about, some, I think people in the room were on this. Sometimes these issues can be addressed peer-to-peer. When students are sitting across the table or in a space with someone that feels familiar to them, that is their age, and, you know, because they think that we don't know anything. Like, I don't know how they think we got to like where we are at this point, that we literally know nothing. But if they're hearing this information from a peer, if a peer is talking about how it impacted them, right, what it meant for them to deal with some of these, these instances of, you know, bias or hate crimes, or whatever you want to call it, I do think that that can feel more relevant to the young people. And obviously, that requires training, so there's conversations that would happen about that, because you don't want, you know, things going out of control. But, but it can be done. I know that these kinds of things exist, and I know that they're often centered around drug and alcohol use, but we can center them around other things. And kids did training for that, and they could do training for this. So that was the one thing I wanted to say. And then also the bit about resilience, I heard that from Dr. Resnick, I heard that. I also heard what another community member shared. And I will just say, you know, I've lived in this community for a really long time. I grew up here, I went through these schools, I've seen the gorgeous changes that have happened, I've seen the areas where we need to do some more work. My children are starting conversations about resilience in elementary school, just so that they can get through, being a part of this community. So those things are happening. I know a lot of us have to have those conversations. It isn't a choice, because the most frightening thing as a parent is for your kid to be called something before you have a conversation with them about it and about what that means. And so I do know that a lot of families are absolutely doing that work. We all have to do that work. I will just say that, you know, it is really hard when the incidents that students are being impacted by are perpetrated by, by children of staff members in the district. That's problematic, and first responders, that's also problematic. So clearly, broader community conversation is what's needed here. Thank you.
Okay.
So thank you for your comments, and thank you, I just put a star next to that one parent's name, Mr. Bevis. Yeah, I just, I'm gonna put a star next to your name as a volunteer for our male mentor group. And to the student, we have been having very frank conversations about, because to Ms. Fulmer Hogan's point, when you hear from us older folk, and quite frankly, we did not live through what you're living through on social media, the lessons are not as impactful. So we've been talking about that with the Digital Wellness Committee, really just recently, about how can we start to train ambassadors to go down and talk to the younger kids about it? Because, you know, we've already started surveying and talking to focus groups of you who feel like the younger ones shouldn't have it because of what you lived, and then, you know, being able to talk to them about some of the things that they're experiencing. And always trying to make history more relatable and relevant for you is something that we strive to do. So thank you for that reminder. I took some notes about some of your comments, and we appreciate that. And I continue to, I know Mrs. Plitz is thinking about this, ways that we can talk to students about our curriculum and how that's impacting them, and ways that we can improve the way you interact with it. Government relations, I think it was, or community relations, we were just talking about a call, the call to action that the Mercer County had around mental health. That was about eight, eight or nine years ago. Dr. Smith and the rest of Mercer County superintendents, and I was part of that movement, was working very hard to support mental health in the community because we had lost several students to suicide. We had big forums where parents and community members were involved and resources were involved around that. The superintendents are presently engaged in conversations about how do we deal with the change in the climate that we're all facing in all of our districts, and how we can really revitalize that call to action. But it has been discussed with the board and also with the superintendents. We're just, you know, trying to find out how we're gonna attack this particular time and this particular problem. Because we do have a, we forget about history. And I can say all day long that this happened in this district recently, and then when it's not happening and things get quiet, then we stop thinking it's important to do. And no matter how much I say this happened, folks just kind of forget, and then it gets good, it gets, things get, clicking along, things get better because of the work we're doing, and then we have a little hiccup because of something that happens in the larger world or because we let our guard down and we stopped doing the things that were working for all of us. So are we gonna continue to keep pushing forward? I'm gonna continue to keep doing the work with students and my staff. It's not always gonna be perfect. We're gonna get busy and we're gonna forget, but hopefully, we're gonna be able to come back and circle as a community and get back to the work. But peer-to-peer, the community being involved, parents being involved, is all gonna make the difference as we move forward with this, this work in the future. Did I forget anything? Oh, yes, yes, so the punishment. Yes, that's, their misunderstanding, it is not a worse consequence for the yonder patch, which is, I think your parent has to come pick it up, and then maybe you get a detention or you have to put in a basket. It's, you're going to be some sort of suspension from school. The police are involved with that, and the prosecutor's office is involved when it's hate speech or hate symbols involved. It's very serious. So that's why we're trying to get the word out to the community, to parents, that this stuff is happening. And it, and it can be a problem for the district if these things keep happening and we become considered a school that's not safe for students. That could be a problem for the school district as well, our rating, how we're seen by other districts, people that want to move into this district. Because that SDS report and our self-rating and the rating that the state gives us for the number of hips we have affects whether or not we're considered a safer civil school. So yes, those consequences are much steeper than the yonder patch, and we have to do some work in making sure kids understand that. But the consequences of a suspension is not really what I'm worried about. The consequences of what happens when this blows up online and your face is attached to it forever on social media is much more serious than, than anything that we can give, give you as a punishment. I don't want your name to be Googled forever in perpetuity with some racial slur or something you put out there in the, in the world. And there's unfortunately, students in this district that have that experience now because of a bad choice they made as a kid. So we're hoping that we keep that from happening to our children, and that's the conversations that our administrative staff are having with our students right now.
And I think the other thing that I heard, and I know the district is working on, is teachers being more proactive.
Yes.
That when they're hearing these things, they're not just letting the students work it out, and that when the administration is hearing things about teachers, that we are also handling that. You know, those, those tend to be HR issues, so you will not hear about those things in the community, but rest assured, this administration takes those things very seriously.
We did it, guys. Public comment is now closed, and I do thank you, I'm, I'm just keeping it light. All right. With that said, we are going to now move into executive session, so I need a first and second to move into executive session.
First.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstaining? Seeing none, thank you, community. We will continue to work together, to work through this, but I appreciate you hanging in there with us.